And a tribe of song.
Good evening, the town council is here and welcomes you to our meeting of June 16th, 2020. It's Tuesday and our special meeting times now begin with Zoom at 5:00 PM. We'll ask our Maurice Sensary, our city clerk, to take the role.
Okay, Councilmember Arnarich.
Here.
Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
Councilmember Store.
Here.
Vice Mayor Blackwell.
I'm here.
Mayor Stepper.
Here.
All present. And for those of you joining us today, I am Danville City Clerk Maurice Sensary and this meeting is being held by teleconference only and is being streamed live on the town website, the town's YouTube channel, and on the video conferencing platform Zoom. We will record this meeting and make it available on the town website tomorrow. And please note that public comment for town council meetings is taken in written form only. Public comments received prior to the four o'clock deadline today will be read aloud during the public comment portion for that item with a three-minute time limit. The full text of any of the written comments received will become part of the record and instructions for public comment are available on every meeting agenda and are available on the town website.
Okay. I'm going to ask you to join us in the pledge of allegiance. So we're not going to stand because we don't have any heads. We are very proud to have you here, join us with us. Please put your hand on your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for joining us. I'm sorry that I forgot to make the announcement earlier that we do have a request for a move, moving the item eight point, five point eight to the end of the agenda after eight point two, and that has been requested by Blair Berry, who is associated with the historic structure. Okay, so Marie, do you have any other announcements before we start your meeting?
No, there are no other changes to the agenda this evening. This takes us to for the good of the town and the town has received one email in this, for this item from Andrew C. Nelson. He says, I'm a young adult who recently moved back to Danville because of the pandemic. I'm happy to be back and I want to get involved. I wonder how I can first adapt this small town to be environmentally transit and pedestrian friendly. How can I and others best learn to get involved with processes like zoning ordinances and the zoning map? And we can certainly reach out to Mr. Nelson following this meeting and give him some suggestions as far as getting involved with the community.
All right, thank you for that answer as well. Are there any other items for the good of the town?
That is it.
Okay, then we will move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda items that we normally take in a single motion that because we have studied them at a study session or there's no substantial questions, but anybody from the audience or from the council is able to pull that item for further discussion. Is there anyone from the council who would like to pull an item from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve items five point one to five point seven, five point nine to five point eleven, pulling item five point eight.
If I may interject, we do have one correction to item five point six. That's resolution number forty-one dash twenty twenty. The town council study session dates for next year, the date of March nineteenth should read March ninth. So with that, the removal of five point eight and the modification to five point six, we have a motion by council member Store and is there a second?
Second.
Second.
And I'll take a roll call vote for adoption of the consent calendar five point one through five point seven, five point nine through five eleven, including the correction to five point six. And councilmember Arnarich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Store?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blackwell?
Yes.
And Mayor Stepper?
Yes.
The consent calendar is approved. The next item on the agenda is the monthly town manager's report. Joe?
Thank you, Marie, Madam Mayor, members of the town council. It's been an eventful two weeks since your last meeting on June the second and I'm going to cover a couple of points to, as part of my update. Let me start by saying that we have had a number of peaceful protests here in town in the last couple of weeks to support the Black Lives Matter movement and raise awareness around racial injustice and police behavior in our country. I think that, as council has previously expressed, we're all understandably angered by the senseless death of George Floyd and other members of the African-American community. These acts have put the issue of systemic racism sort of front and center, both here in this country and on the world stage. As a local government, I think we have a responsibility to, to hear what's being said so that we can grow in our understanding of these issues and continue to serve this community in a way that supports justice, equity, and inclusion for, for everyone. So we do appreciate the peaceful manner in which these protests have been staged and held. And I also want to express my appreciation to our police department for the calm and professional approach that, that they've taken, whether it's been to protect the rights of the peaceful protesters or protecting our residents and our businesses as they do on an ongoing basis. With respect to COVID-19 and, and an update there, as of today, we had two thousand and twenty-six cases in Contra Costa County with twenty-six hospitalizations and forty-nine deaths. We have thirty-two confirmed cases in Danville. These cases are beginning to trend back upward again, which is something that was anticipated as more and more businesses reopen and the shelter in place order is, is relaxed. We're continuing cautiously and systematically emerge from the shelter in place order that's been in place since mid-March. And the county, in, in something of a paradigm shift since your last meeting, is now moving to align our county health order with that of the state. So the pace of change appears to be accelerating. I know that council pushed for that at your June second council meeting. I know that our council, our county has been granted a variance to move forward with the next round of businesses and activities that are going to be able to reopen on June the seventeenth. And Contra Costa is the first of the six or seven Bay Area counties to, to do that. I think it's also helpful that our health department has provided a timeline for reopening of other types of businesses and activities. And so from a planning standpoint, that, that's very helpful. So we're continuing to try to post the latest information on our website and of course, continuing to advise everyone that they should continue to monitor the county health department's website because sometimes these changes are being made with, with very short advanced notice. As far as the town is concerned, we're continuing to operate under the state of emergency that was declared back in mid-March. For the most part, our public buildings continue to be closed with our parks. We're continuing to modify the use of the parks with what the health order allows. So we've, we've made some adjustments. Our tennis courts are now open. The dog park at Hatt McGee Ranch Park is now open. All of our park restrooms are now open. We're continuing to get inquiries from the community. Playground equipment is still not cleared to be used and organized sports have not been cleared to resume either. We continue to appreciate everything that our community members have done to navigate through what has been a very challenging three months. I would, I would say that their diligence has really contributed to Danville having among the lowest incidence of confirmed COVID cases in our county. And so we are continuing to rely a great deal upon all of our community members to exercise caution and common sense. It's a common theme you've heard from me with each one of these updates because we don't want our residents putting themselves or other people at risk. Moving over into economic development, the council heard, I think, a very excellent and comprehensive presentation at your last meeting from our economic development manager, Jill Bergman, and the president and CEO of the Danville Area Chamber of Commerce, Zay Perrin. And our organizations are continuing to work very closely together to support our businesses and that includes working with the businesses that haven't yet been cleared to reopen or operate so that we can assist them with their plans to safely reopen once they're cleared to do that. I think these efforts have positioned us very well. When we got the word that restaurants would be allowed to reopen for outdoor dining, back on June the fifth, we had a plan of action. The, the town council immediately approved some street closures. We, the town had a simple, no-cost process in place so that we could issue temporary use permits. And then we proceeded to purchase and install barricades to create additional outdoor spaces. So at this point up to today, we've issued land use permits that cover about thirty-five restaurants and they're reopening for outdoor dining just in time for the summer season. This past weekend, the Recover Danville Alliance volunteers distributed about two hundred packets of information that contained reopening guidelines for, for our businesses. They, they distributed those townwide and, and we do want to give a shout out to, to Turner Stanton for his assistance in coordinating that effort. Jill Bergman, Zay Perrin, and Leanna Dauto also hand-walked another fifty packets to downtown businesses and we'll be doing more of that this week. So with retail and restaurant businesses now operating on a limited basis, our downtown and our commercial areas are slowly coming back to life. Some other economic development highlights, our town website includes Danville Open, which is an online directory that showcases right now over four hundred different businesses and the services that they offer. And we will be adding more businesses as they reopen for, for, for business to the community. We're continuing to host a weekly Friday follow-up and future focus meeting where businesses are receiving updates on reopening plans and protocols, sort of by business sector, if you will, as, as they're gearing up to reopen. We are continuing to provide legislative updates on the CARES Act funding, the current health order, and also sharing what the town is doing at a local level. If you go to our master calendar, you can click on the link if you want to participate in the next Zoom meeting for that purpose. And then on tonight's agenda, we have the 2021 budget, which includes business promotion funding for the upcoming year. And the council also just approved a separate consent item to provide some funding assistance to our Danville Area Chamber of Commerce. With respect to some other projects and activities, we're continuing to move forward with a number of different community improvements. The Park and Ride Expansion Project at Sycamore Valley Road, the design work has been completed for that project. The new San Ramon Creek Bridge that'll cross the creek at the town green, the design work is ongoing for that project, as is the design work for the relocation of our police department and our town offices. The pavement management, the, the slurry seal project that, that was just approved by the council, that'll, that'll re, re-slurry seal, try and say that three times, Diablo Road between Harts Avenue and Green Valley Road. So it's about one point seven miles and that'll be coupled with the new bicycle safety improvements that will more clearly delineate bike lanes and turn movements and so on for bicycles to improve bike safety. And that project's going to get geared up and ready to start middle of next month, so mid-July. Then out at Diablo Vista Park, we are starting construction this month on the replacement of, of the synthetic turf soccer field out there. So that'll be generation three of synthetic turf at Diablo Vista Park. We're, we're continuing to monitor the actions of our state legislature as they move forward with their budget deliberations. And we're also watching as they continue to promote, propose and promote new legislation that's further intended to spur production of more affordable housing statewide. Our police chief, Alan Shields, is continuing to present his weekly ten-eight in-service podcast on Facebook Live. I know some of you have tuned in to see that. That's Wednesdays at five o'clock and these have actually been attracting anywhere from two to five thousand views. So they, they, there's quite a bit of viewership there. Our recreation arts and community services staff is continuing to work on how to reintroduce our summer programming consistent with the changes that are being rolled out in the, in the health order, based upon a recently completed survey that they completed. We're moving forward with a number of recreation summer camps. And just at, at a very high level view, they are planning for one and two-week sessions. They're going to start on June twenty-second and hopefully run through August the seventh. These are going to be full day and half-day camps, each with up to twelve participants. We believe that we have the potential to serve six to eight hundred participants in total while still adhering to the strict protocols and rules that we need to in order to maximize the safety of our participants and, and our instructors. So summer is usually a very, very busy time for our recreation staff. This summer, not so much so, but we are getting that engine restarted, rolling out these programs. And so far, the, the, the first registrations have, have filled up very, very quickly. We're also continuing to, to offer a variety of online options and courses, including art classes, karate, sketching, performing arts, language classes. And we're looking into the feasibility of running a swim camp, offering lap swim and also swim time that would be associated with the camps. On the library front, library services resumed yesterday with front door service at the Danville Library. Patrons are able to reserve books, DVDs, audio books and the like through the county library website. Then they can schedule an appointment for pickup sometime next month, the month of July. The library anticipates that they will be able to reopen the building with some fairly stringent social distancing guidelines in place and about a twenty-five percent occupancy on, on that, on that building. July fourth, you're all aware, the, the Kiwanis are working on their virtual parade. I understand they have over a hundred entries so far that are being compiled and put into production. The parade's going to be livestreamed from ten to eleven-thirty in the morning on Sunday the fourth. And so we would encourage our community members to watch for more outreach here in the next week or so as we get all of the information from Kiwanis and, and are able to post it on our website as well. Following up on last year's popular Dogs of Danville Public Art Exhibit, the town is presenting Hearts Around Hearts this year. It's really a terrific new exhibit that's featuring seventeen uniquely adorned heart sculptures that are going to be placed throughout the downtown. I thought it would be hard to top last year's event, but having seen a number of these sculptures that have already been placed, I mean, the artwork is, is just phenomenal and they're, they're really, really beautiful works of art. So we're continuing to place those. The new public art exhibit is going to run through the middle of October of this year. So in closing, we've all seen the banners up around the downtown. We all want to once again offer our congratulations to the two thousand and twenty graduating classes from San Ramon Valley High School and Montavista High School. And for that matter, all of our graduating seniors here in town and their very proud families. We would ask that anyone who's interested, please continue to track our town website at www.danville.ca.gov for all of the latest information or to find people that, that they can contact to get any information or assistance that, that they might require from the town. And with that, I would be happy to conclude my report and take any council questions. Thank you.
Are there any council questions? All right, that was very thorough again, Joe. Thank you. Remind people that this is webstream. People can go back and listen to some of those dates and make sure that they get to our opening of the new park at Hatt McGee. Thank you. So we will go to next, administrative staff reports where public comment is invited and it actually is an action item here. And I will turn this over to Maurice Sensary to introduce item seven point one.
Okay, seven point one is consider adoption of resolution number forty-six dash twenty twenty, adopting an outdoor flag pole display policy and resolution number forty-seven dash twenty twenty, approving the display of the rainbow flag during the month of June. And city attorney Rob Ewing will present this item.
And before you do that, Rob, I'm just going to comment that we will, those are two separate resolutions, so which will be voted upon separately.
Thank you for that introduction, Mayor Stepper, members of the council. So as Mary indicated, there's two separate resolutions here and you're going to need to vote on them in a specific order. So let me take you a minute to walk you through why we, why that's true. We don't normally put you in that position, but things were a little unusual this year. So over the past year, so starting last spring, the towns received several requests from town residents asking the town to consider flying the pride flag during the month of June, which is Pride Month.
Rob, can I ask a question? It's really difficult to hear you. I don't know if the rest of the council's having an issue, but you sound a little muffled. I'm not sure if it's just me.
Try and speak up. I checked the mic in advance and it was on loud, so I don't know.
You still sound muffled. I guess it's just, is there anybody else?
I can hear you okay. Just have to be real quiet.
Yeah.
Anyways, the, so anyways, we received those requests. We received the most recent one on March fourth, my resident who came to the council meeting and asked you to consider that. Council had questions about the legality of some of the First Amendments associated with that. And on the following Tuesday, on the tenth, we held a study session at which we talked about how these policies work for what are described as commemorative flags. At the end of that study session, the council asked out to prepare a policy to look at and also then to put on a future agenda consideration of the, of the pride flag. That was going to happen in April at two different meetings and unfortunately between March tenth and April, we had problems, so it got deferred. And that's why we have both those resolutions in front of you tonight. So what I'm going to do now is walk you through in the staff report both the resolutions. Then we, you have to answer any questions you have. I believe we have a number of public comments which Marie will read into the record. And then again, we'll ask you to take the resolutions one at a time. So the first resolution, resolution forty-six deals with the flag policy itself. The, while the policy would address all flags flown on town, outdoor flight poles, which we currently don't have any policy whatsoever, the primary reason for doing it would be to address this issue of commemorative flags and the potential for First Amendment issues. As noted in the staff report, not only our council, but all city councils and boards across the country have had concerns about whether flying any kind of commemorative flag opens the door to any type of flag that the council may or may not agree with. The answer is that you don't have to have that concern. The policy describes the town's outdoor flag poles as what are called in the courts non-public forums. And what that means is that the town has the ability through the town council to control the, the messages that the town wishes to convey. And it does not open up as public forums in which any member of the community can express a particular point of view. The way that would work under this policy is sort of threefold. Number one is in order for the town to fly any kind of commemorative flag, there has to be a request made by a member of the town council to put that item on an, an agenda. Simply asking, some asking in the community isn't enough. A council member has to ask to put it on the agenda. If that happens, then the item would come on a, a public meeting and the entire council would have the chance to discuss it, receive any public input, and it would require approval of a majority of the council in order to approve the, the flying or displaying that flag. If that happens, then the policy says that the flag could stay up for no longer than one month and it would be flown on the flagpole outside the library next to the town green downtown. These steps, which, and then I should take a step back, this policy is not unique to us. Pretty much every city around the country who has dealt with this issue has a policy which reads substantially similar and is to address those concerns which you have voiced over time. So that's a nutshell summary of resolution forty-six dash twenty twenty and the policy that's attached. So after you vote on that, and if you adopt that resolution, then the second resolution forty-seven dash twenty twenty looks at the question of the actual pride flag itself and whether or not to approve its display during the month of June. Again, we've received several requests for this over the years from Danville residents. At your last meeting on June second, you adopted a proclamation recognizing June as Pride Month. And the, whereas is the findings that are contained in this draft resolution are sort of a short, short-form version of what was contained in that proclamation which you adopted two weeks ago. If you were to adopt both resolutions, meaning that you've approved flying that flag, it would be up for the rest of this month since we're obviously halfway through. So again, in conclusion, on the process, I'll take any questions you have at this point. Marie has other comments to read. When we're done with that, we would ask you to discuss and vote on resolution forty-six first. If you pass that, then you return to resolution forty-seven. So with that, I'm happy to conclude my report and answer any questions you might have.
So I'll ask for council questions first. Noel Arnrich, then Renee, then Lisa.
Rob, thank you for this. I, I know we talked about this before. I just wanted to make sure. This policy is very similar to the other eighteen cities in Contra Costa County. Is that correct?
Yes, all the ones that I've seen are worded very similarly. San Ramon City Council has, I think, a special meeting tomorrow night where they're considering, this is a standalone item and theirs is worded almost identically to ours.
Okay, and we have found so far, because some of those have had those in place for more than a year.
Correct.
And we, we found that they have worked and accomplished what most councils are trying to do.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I think it was Renee next.
Hi, Rob, I have a couple of questions actually. So once somebody requests a member, you know, a request a flag to be flown and that said flag has been approved upon by the council and voted on, does that flag flow, you know, fly into perpetuity every single, like say for instance, as we're talking about the pride flag, would it fly every June from here on out?
That'd be entirely up to the council. The way that I drafted resolution, the way I drafted resolution forty-seven is it just refers to June. It's a recurring event every year. It's the same month every year. So you could, if, if you were to approve that tonight, that, you could either change it so it's this year or as it's written, it would go forward every year, but it would be on a case by case if there was a specific. But it would be on a case by case. If there was a specific flag for some purpose that you wanted to fly and it was a one-off, then the resolution would specify that.
So as with the proclamation, you know, people have to come forward and request to have a proclamation. Would it be the same, could we ask for the same type of situation to happen if somebody requested to fly a flag on certain months so that we don't lock ourselves in? I mean, with 12 months in the year, if 15 people come forward and request flags, you know, how do we handle that? And can we do it that way?
Sure, you could do it any way you want. I mean, it's, I would tell you that most of the cities who have done this haven't had that, that volume of requests. You could deal with it on a year to year basis. You can deal with it on an annual if it's something you believe warrants annual. That's, it's entirely up to, it's entirely up to the council.
But this does, the way it's written right now, at least that's the way I'm reading it, is that it binds the town council to automatically fly that flag on the date approved or the month that it's approved. So if it's June, next June, we'll be flying the pride flag again as well. Is that correct?
That's how it's drafted, but if, if a majority of the council wants to specify that it's June of 2020, that's, that's totally within your discretion.
Okay, and then it also states, are we going to be flying one flag at a time? Say, for instance, if we do have that situation come hypothetically and we have two people come for the month of June or three people that request a flag and they all seem, you know, worthy of flying that flag or in our belief system, what do we do with that? How are we going to do that? And can we fly more than one flag?
Physically, no. That poll, that poll, when we talked about this at study session in March, the consensus of the council was that if you were to approve a policy and if you were to allow any of these types of flags, that that poll in front of the library community center was the, the preferred location. Under, under law, we already have to fly the, not have to, we get to fly, but we're also required legally to fly the United States and the state flags. There's only room for one other flag on that poll. So if, for instance, at some time in the future, you had multiple requests, again, it'd be up to the council to decide, do you want to pick one over the other? Do you want to divvy up the month?
You could have, you could have four requests and approve all four and do one week for each. And there are months that we will find that to happen.
Well, and that would be have, that would actually have to be written in there because it's not written that way currently. It's, you know, I mean, we would, we would need to specify. So the other question I had, and I'll, I'll end at that is, when we receive these flags, each organization, will they, how it's worked in the past? Are they giving you the flag and you fly the flag and you give it back to them? Do we, do we provide the flag? I mean, how does that work as well?
Well, in this case, we have, we would be supplying that flag because we want to, we want to pick the one that we think fits and works on that poll. All the other flags, again, we've never flown any one of these types of flags, so there isn't any history on that. But I think we generally would, for instance, I believe we supply the, well, I know we supply the American and Californian flags. I believe we supply the POW MIA flags that fly at the Pet's Hall and out at the All Wars Memorial at Oak Hill Park.
So if they, if they provide, say, for instance, since we're speaking pride flag, the pride flag is not going to be provided to us, the rainbow pride flag, that particular one? Can we ask for them to send us their flag, what it looks like? And then we choose which flag we can fly out of those? Does the town have to incur that expense?
In this case, we have one ready to roll in case you do this tonight. But again, if in the future, I would, I would tell you that again, with, I know with the cities who've adopted these policies, they don't get that many requests. So it's, you know, we typically have done ourselves because we want to control it. Because it's, again, it's our message. It's not an individual's message. It's ours. And frankly, there could be some concern that if you let the group supply the flag, that you're wavering from that and that potentially creates issues.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Sure.
I think it was Lisa next.
Yes, thank you. Many of my questions have been answered, but I do want to confirm that most cities are just not seeing the kind of requests from other groups that we're anticipating. And because this flag policy does allow us to make the choice, is that correct? I mean, I just haven't seen it in any of the cities that have this flag policy that they have had a lot of different requests, but I want to make sure I'm right about that.
To the best of my knowledge, that is, that is correct. Definitely out here in Contra Costa, I believe that's correct. And I'm sorry, I forgot the second part of your question.
This is all in one. It's all in one. I mean, basically just confirming that we, because we are one of the fewer people that haven't had a flag policy and they have been on the books for a while. And so we have a chance to look at what other cities have been doing. So I just want to make sure I'm right about that.
Yeah, no, that's, that's absolutely correct. I believe that most, if not all, the other cities in the county have a policy. As indicated, San Ramon, I think, is having a special meeting tomorrow night. I think they have a policy already, but they're modifying it somehow. It wasn't entirely clear to me from their staff report, but they do have it on their agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Rob, so my questions had to do with, usually when we get a policy, whether it's about marijuana or vaping or transportation, whatever, we usually talk to a lot of different cities. In this particular draft, only has one city. Is there some reason? Rob?
Yeah.
Because usually I would look and see what seven or eight cities were doing. For example, San Ramon has been doing a marquee. Richmond was doing banners. There's, there's other choices here.
Yeah, I, the question that I was asked by the council to look at back in March was a flagpole policy. I looked at probably eight or nine different flagpole policy around the Bay Area. The one I presented to the council at the study session back in March was from Pittsburgh. Because it was the most recent one I could find and was pretty cleanly written. But they all, as indicated earlier, every one of them I've seen basically has almost identical language. Some of them are different because they have more facilities with more flagpoles and they might fly commemorative flags at more than one location. But they all, the, when you boil it down to the nuts and bolts, they're all almost identical.
My second question has to do with the banners across hearts. And those are provided by, and I understand there's a little difference here with respect to whose opinion it is. You know, the towns versus the agency. But if you were going to pick a particular flag, there's lots of choices. If you were doing something for Rotary, you're doing something for even this flag, there are several choices of flags. So, but the banners are done by the individual agencies whose, we just, I think it's on this agenda. We're increasing the cost for them to put them up and down because of the individual costs. And they're the ones that provide it. So I don't know, I'm having some concerns there. It's something we've done other ways in other places. Any comments on what we're doing other places? Because that's our banner across hearts.
Yeah, I would say that I have told the council in my 25 years here, I've told the council more than once that there are some concerns with how we handle those banners down there on hearts.
Okay.
So I will, I will leave it at that.
Okay, that's all right. I know the council will end up with comments. I have several comments. And I think other council members will too, but I'd like to go to the public comments now. I believe we have 19 comments. And Marie Sensary, I'll turn that over to our city clerk. And thank you, Rob, for that report as well.
You're welcome.
Marie?
Yes, the item is now open to public comment. I'll be reading 19 emails into the record. These were received by the four o'clock PM deadline today and the three minute time limit applies. The full text of all of the written comments will be included in the public record. And I will note that inappropriate comments have been edited. The first email I have is from Jackie Guzzo. "I'm the president of PFLAG Danville, San Ramon Valley. Thank you for declaring June Pride Month. We appreciate the flag policy which allows town council members to request commemorative flags be flown on our official flagpoles and look forward to it being accepted. Thank you for moving to approve flying the pride flag at the library. We, the parents of LGBTQ plus kids, will tell you it's common for our kids to wait to come out until their freshman year of college. Think about the high school dances, the proms and senior balls of your own kids. Think about the excitement of first dates, first kisses, many of which parents knew about because their kids were a little scared, very happy, whatever the emotion, it was part of growing up. Parental support was there for those kids at any, at an important time. Why have there been so many kids in Danville who are afraid to talk to their own families about the thoughts they were having around their gender or who they wanted to date? Why do our kids have to leave Danville to live as the awesome people they are? We ask that the Philly pride flag, which adds stripes of brown and black to draw attention to the LGBTQ plus people of color within LGBTQ plus community, be flown. Let's show all our LGBTQ plus citizens, whether out or not, and our families that we are a safe and welcoming community for all of us together." Second one is from Mike Arata. "Before enacting a policy regarding outdoor flag pole displays and then immediately utilizing that policy to display an LGBTQ plus rainbow flag, town council should consider broader implications and consequences. One, a related proclamation, item 5.2 in the council agenda of June 2nd, was presented to the local president of PFLAG, an overtly political organization. For example, the National PFLAG website offers a national policy guide and advocacy toolkit which teaches about advocacy methods, ways to lobby and PFLAG's legislative priorities. Two, among other things, that posting supplies, that posting supplies presentations by two homosexual transgender organizations to oppose what is called conversion therapy. And at least implicitly, PFLAG supports what is called gender reassignment therapy. Eminent psychiatrists join various religious groups in taking the opposite position on both of these issues. Three, as Mr. Ewing asserts, the government's speech doctrine does permit governments to speak or to express opinions. But as Cornell Law School's Legal Information Institute observes, problems can arise when the government utilizes or relies on private parties to relay a particular message. Four, that is particularly the case here, as with PFLAG and its adopted policy positions, a number of outlooks which underlie the rainbow pride flag are opposed by large and important segments of the Danville community. That's a critical whereas which has been omitted from Resolution 47-2020. Five, there is likely almost universal local public support for display of the American flag and the POW MIA flag. So Danville quite properly should continue displaying them. But meanwhile, the first part of your second whereas in Resolution 47-2020 says that the town of Danville is committed to supporting visibility, dignity and equity for all members of the community, emphasis added. So given the lack of broad local consensus regarding the controversial gay pride flag and its political intent, that flag should no more be flown on town maintained flagpoles than should a straight pride flag. Alternatively, if you now permit the former, you should also permit the latter." Item three is from Peggyen Brosnan. "I am writing to say I support celebrating Pride Month and the city of Danville flying the pride flag." Number four is Terry N. D. Thompson. "My wife and our daughters moved to Danville in 1980 and we have lived in the same home for the past 40 years. About 20 years ago, the post office changed our zip code to Alamo, but I still consider myself a Danville resident. I strongly oppose Resolution 47-2020 and urge council members to vote against it. The council should strive for unity in the town and not divisiveness. The rainbow flag represents the LGBTQ movement, which is strictly political. The town should stay miles away from becoming a mouthpiece for political speech. What is next? Will the town put up a flag for the Democratic Party during the Democrat convention or a Keep America Great flag during the November elections? How about putting up a Mexican flag during Cinco de Mayo or a Christian flag during Easter month? This is a slippery slope of political correctness. The LGBTQ organization has set a trap for you. Don't fall into the trap because you want to be seen as open-minded and inclusive. The reverse will be true. You will be seen as biased and divisive. Do the right thing and vote unanimously to reject Resolution 47-2020." Number five is from Allison Gardner. "Today in Danville, California, you have the opportunity to support the flying of a very important flag. I humbly ask you to honor the request to fly the Philly pride flag representing the LGBTQ plus community of color as a symbol of hope and belonging for all. I want to thank you for valuing the diversity that strengthens the town of Danville. I want to thank you for proclaiming support of June as Pride Month. I want to thank you all for listening to the many voices who have shared the importance of this flag. As a teacher in the San Ramon Valley Unified School District, I want to especially thank for supporting the voices of our youth in these matters. Our young community members are fighting for acceptance, understanding and respect for all. Our youth seek representation. Our community of all ages wants to know where we belong. I want to thank you for standing up, being brave and listening to all of these voices. As a minority group, the LGBTQ plus community often feels the need to hide for their own safety. Most moments, we feel the need to silence our own voices, shun our own truth and conform as best as possible to blend into the majority. Today, by approving the display of the rainbow Philly pride flag each June, you're saying we might be safe here. You're saying we have a voice, that we should stand tall and be proud, that we belong. By flying the Philly pride flag, you are telling your community that Danville is a sanctuary for us and that Black Lives Matter as this flag represents the racial diversity in the LGBTQ plus community and that we are all welcome here. In a time when so many feel so isolated, so separated, so disparate, so misunderstood, you are saying we all belong. Thank you for standing up for us. Thank you for taking this bold action and providing and proving that Danville truly welcomes and supports all people." Number six is from Linda Mitchell. "I oppose flying the LGBTQ flag during Gay Pride Month. I've lived in Danville since 1980 and enjoy the non-political atmosphere of our wonderful town. Everyone can enjoy strolling our downtown, our car shows, street fairs, signature July 4th parade and other events without any political commentaries. Let's keep it that way." Number seven is from Eric Johnson. "For the past 15 years, I have owned and operated a publication, Alive East Bay Magazine, serving thousands of readers and numerous business operators in Danville and its surrounding communities. Our office was located in downtown Danville for nearly eight years before relocating to nearby Alamo. I oppose Resolution 47-2020 and urge Danville council members to vote against it. Council members are to represent all members of the community. Choosing to display any particular flag other than flags representing the entire community invites the appearance of favoritism and bias. For example, if a BLM, Black Lives Matter, flag is suggested next, I expect many in the community, I would, insist that a thin blue line flag also be displayed as well. While groups and factions within the community will plead their cases passionately, council members must rise above emotionally charged arguments and make decisions based upon logic, representing all members of the community without regard to affiliation. Rejecting Resolution 47-2020 is the right thing to do." Number eight is from Victoria Felix. "I have been a resident of San Ramon and now Danville for more than 20 years. We have raised our seven kids here and appreciate the beautiful city in which we are so fortunate to live in. I am writing to you to request that the pride flag be flown each and every June so that my LGBTQ friends and family can realize that they are accepted in our cities. I have two adult kids that are lesbian and gay. I've seen the heartache that they have received with the judgment and condemnation from people that don't accept them. It is imperative that our LGBTQ community is welcomed and affirmed by all. It is also important that they are shown equality and justice. It is my hope that you will make a positive decision towards equality in our city and nation." Number nine is from Gary Estrella. "As an almost 50-year resident of Danville, I support Danville codifying an outdoor flag pole display policy. Flag display has historical standing and customs of which I support. The national standards, state flags and city flags should be displayed in accordance with the four US Code Title IV. From my reading of Resolution number 46-2020, it looks like that is exactly what the town council is doing. I am glad it is being formalized. As a veteran, the POW MIA flag at the Veterans Memorial Building and the All Wars Memorial at Oak Hill Park honors those who are missing or held as prisoners of war. Section 1082 of the 1998 Defense Authorization Act during the first term of the 150th, 105th Congress specified how and why this flag was to be flown. As a resident of Danville with associations in several different segments of our community ranging from veterans groups, religious affiliation and youth groups, among others, I do not support a policy that would cause any divisiveness in the community. I believe granting the display of commemorative flags other than those listed above, especially those that represent issues that divide rather than unite, should not be condoned by the town council. We are a town, not individuals. Flying special interest flags on the town flag pole should be avoided." Flying special interest flags on the town flag pole should be avoided. Number ten, Mark and Patricia Earnwood. Honorable Town Council, as a resident of Danville since nineteen seventy three. Business owner and commercial property owner, I want to strongly urge the council to reject the rainbow flag proposal. I view the LGBTQ movement as a highly political movement of the left. I believe the town should take a nonpolitical position on all issues unrelated to town management. Further, should the town accommodate this group? What group will next push for their cause to be displayed to? Number eleven, Skip George. I am a citizen of Danville and I have been so since nineteen eighty two. I want to address the American flag. I believe it is our nation's symbol and believe it should be honored. Over several million soldiers of our military have given their lives for our flag so that all of us could live in the United States of America. Eleven of my OCS classmates are among them. They shed their blood and lies for the US flag. I know today there are people that would burn, kneel and desecrate our flags that I feel they have little understanding. It was paid for by those lives to keep us free. I believe the US flag should never fly with any organization's flag. The national protocol is set for a reason. I feel that it should be followed. Any organization's flag could be displayed nearby, but always lower. I respectfully submit this to the town council. Number twelve, Shashana Singh. I am resident of Danville and understand that you will be holding a meeting this coming Tuesday to discuss the flag policy and flying the pride flag for the month of June. I am disappointed that this has not already been approved as we are now in the second week of Pride Month. I thought this was discussed and approved last year. We have a prominent LGBTQ community here in Danville and we should allow the flag to be flown to show. Our support and inclusivity for our fellow brothers and sisters in the gay community. I hope that you will vote to fly the pride flag for the remainder of the month and then the entire month of June moving forward. Thirteen Sylvia Coburn. I respectfully disagree with the council's viewpoint on displaying the rainbow flag during the month of June. It may symbolize diversity in our community, but I don't feel it is necessary to fly it on town property along with our patriotic flags. Homeowners can display the rainbow flag outside their homes without controversy if they choose. In addition, many other organizations would request the same consideration for their flags, which could become a major issue of contention. The American flag, California flag, POW MIA flag and the Danville flag. Should only be permitted in the town's flag policy. We as proud Americans and Danville citizens share in the pride of those symbols and no other should be considered. Thank you most sincerely to Mayor Stepper, the other town council members, the police department, fire department, first responders. And all those who have and continue to make our wonderful community safe and provide law and order in these troubling times. Number fourteen is from Jerry Yehiro. Please convey my approval of both resolutions as long as they adhere to the specifics of each resolution. Specifically, resolution forty six twenty twenty, item B. Commemorative flags, paragraph three exclusively on the flag pole at the town library community center. Fifteen is from Patriot Helen Churney. I'm writing because as a Taiwanese and Christian living in the San Ramon Valley Unified School District. I'm a minority. If you pass LGBTQ flag or display for display, please include these three flags that represent me. Young gay California Assemblyman Evan Low of Communist Chinese descent and LGBTQ. Spent major money in Taiwan to turn Taiwan into a multi-sexual country despite super majority Taiwanese population. Voted against LGBTQ homosexual marriage bill via a referendum. Because it clashes with Taiwanese culture, which our character for good is written with a boy and a girl. If LGBTQ is able to assault my Taiwanese heritage, then I ask for equal opportunity to be known. That Taiwanese people believe good is a boy and a girl, and we refuse American LGBTQ to attack our heritage. By legalizing homosexual marriage against Taiwanese votes at a referendum by coerced Taiwanese courts to pass homosexual marriage bill against the majority. Of Taiwanese people. We are not a colony of California Assemblyman Evan Low nor American LGBTQ. Taiwan's cowardly court passed homosexual marriage against the will of Taiwanese, proving the power and influence of the LGBT groups from America. Item sixteen is from Eric Ardell. With respect to agenda item seven point one, this statement is specific to the flag pole in front of the Veterans Memorial Building on Harts Avenue. From the commander of American Legion Mount Diablo Post two four six. An original resident VSO in that building since nineteen twenty five. The American Legion, under national charter by the Congress of the United States and as a five oh one C nineteen nonprofit. Veterans Organization is and must remain an apolitical organization, as do all other VSOs. Resident in the Veterans Memorial Building. It is acknowledged that the American Legion and the other VSOs do not own the building, but it is held in trust for veterans. As such, the flag pole is tacitly, if not explicitly, associated with veterans and their organizations. Therefore, the flying of any flags other than the American flag, the California flag. And the POW MIA flag on the flag pole at the Veterans Memorial Building. Has not in the past and must not be allowed or otherwise permitted in the future. I strongly recommend that any council resolution or ordinance regarding flags codify this prohibition. Seventeen from Bob Seda. First of all, I would like to commend the extraordinary efforts of the town council, the town staff and the police department during these most challenging times. Thank you. I would like to comment on the proposed resolutions forty six twenty twenty and forty seven twenty twenty. To the point, I feel it is most important to keep it simple. The council should formalize and codify the historic primacy of the American flag and the California flag on town flag poles. Following federal guidelines. Furthermore, I would suggest it is in the best interest of the community at large to avoid the display of commemorative flags on these same town flag poles. Adopting a policy allowing commemorative flags will most certainly result in similar requests from innumerable worthy causes and organizations. Any such precedent will put the town in the position of picking and choosing. There will be inevitable challenges from those denied with resultant legal implications. I am most concerned that the town avoid any policy that would potentially divert time, energy and resources away from the important business at hand. The past practice of issuing town proclamations in support of worthwhile causes seems most appropriate going forward. Certainly, I vigorously support any and all efforts by the town council that focus on measures that protect. And represent all members of our special community. Thank you for your consideration. Eighteen is from Val Williams. At the last town council meeting, you voted unanimously to proclaim June as LGBTQ month. I commend you for making that proclamation and it means a lot to the LGBTQ plus community and allies. This afternoon, you will be voting on the flag policy and to fly the pride flag during the month of June. I wholeheartedly support this measure and I encourage you again to vote unanimously in favor of both resolutions. Thank you to your staff for working diligently on these efforts and thank you to P flag for providing the council with sample resolutions. I am so proud of our Danville community and I'm very appreciative of this town council. The last one is number nineteen from Christine N Chang M D. As a result of Danville, excuse me, as a resident of Danville and an internal medicine physician practicing in town since nineteen ninety eight. I strongly feel that Danville needs to visibly support its LGBTQ community by flying the rainbow flag for June Pride Month every year. There is a very significant growing population of LGBTQ Danville residents, especially in our high school population. These wonderful people are very often marginalized and ignored. Many of my patients, especially those in high school, experience harassment from other Danville residents. I know this because my patients who are gay, transgender, et cetera. Suffer from depression, eating disorders, migraines and abdominal disorders directly as a result of this harassment. By just flying the rainbow flag in June, the city of Danville will help to mitigate the discrimination. The LGBTQ community experiences by showing support. That's all for public comment and the item now goes back to the town council for discussion.
Okay, thank you very much, Marie. We'll take some comment, take questions if there's any questions and then we'll take comments from the council. Minor comments, so hope them, no.
Rob, sort of four comments, I should say questions. And as to address some of the things we've heard. Any reason we couldn't strengthen under. We're talking about the Veterans Memorial Buildings. That that there shall be no other flags other than the MIA POW flag that's missing. That would be flown there. Is there a way to make it clear that we're saying we're allowing it, but that we're not allowing any other flags on that?
Sure, I mean, we. It's sort of implicit in saying you can only fly commemoratives at the library, but if you, if the council would like, we could certainly amend and say that. At that facility, nothing but those three flags would ever be.
At Oak Hill Park and at.
At the, yeah, at the All Wars Memorial as well, certainly.
And anyway, any reason we couldn't say that all flag displayed requests shall be made on an annual basis?
Again, that's a hundred percent within your discretion.
And the next one, that the duration would be no less than one week and no greater than one month. Depending upon the number of flag requests. Per specific month, which would mean no, no more than four flags could be flown in a month. Any reason we couldn't do that?
No, that'd be fine.
And that, could we also put in there that the specific flag slash graphic representation shall be submitted with all requests?
I'm sorry, could you run that by me again?
Yeah, so could we put in there that? A specific, the specific flag and or graphic. Of the flag be submitted with every request?
Sure, so I, what I would suggest on that front. Is that as if someone is making a request of it to the council. Or if our council members bring it up on their own, that yeah, the graphic would be included in the packet that that goes to the council to look at. I think the, the acquisition of the flag itself, again, because this is supposed to be the towns. That the town's controlling this. And it's, it's acknowledging that it's the town's position. I think you want to have the town acquire the actual flag itself.
I mean, not particularly. A graphic representation of that.
The graphics, yeah.
Okay, great. That was my question, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see anybody else having questions. I'd like to make my comments. The US Code, chapter one and the flag is most of the source of my comments, which I spent quite a bit of time reading this weekend. Of course, Rob knows it by heart. There's nothing wrong with what he has said, it's just my interpretation. My comments. Are not about the rights or welcoming of the LB LGBTQ community, which we commended last week or two weeks ago, sorry, at our council meeting. I do not have any problems with having that proclamation. However, and of course, with that community, we all work. We have people in our town offices that work that that are members of that community. We have people in our schools, we have teachers that wrote to us, we have business people, we have. Kids, it's our police, they, it's wherever they live, they live. So this is not about who they are and how they participate in our community, but it's about how we display things on as a government. And what's the job description of public city officials and particularly with respect to the American flag? And its importance in defining our core values for all our citizens, not a small part of those citizens. Well, the Constitution of the United States is quoted by most of our presidents guarantees us the right for all the people and by the people and for the people we will administer to the government. These rights are the same for all, and I believe that our government flags, the American, California and Danville stand for the rights of all. And I believe I took that oath when I was elected to the town council to establish policies that help all of American citizens. Not policies that separate and segregate and point out our differences. But rather those policies that protect our lives, our property and the rights of all of our citizens. If at any time our police needed extra protection, as we've seen across America right now. Or citizens from Asia or black people, well, especially with the terrible situation with respect to George Floyd. Needed extra protection, we would provide it. Certainly, our business owners who had those boarded up shops got extra protection from our police department. And sometimes our LGBTQ youth need extra. Protection and we have seen that with a case that's coming to the school board. Then we would change our policies because that's our job as government to set the policies, to set the ordinances, and that's what we're adopting here tonight. But I don't think this is a policy of the town, it's a policy of another group. I know that one of the ways we support these is we have our, for example, school resource officers, which are very strong. We support the Discovery Center, which is a private organization, but a lot of our organizations do that. And so we do try to look after particularly our youth, and that was mentioned by several of the speakers. If our policies are insufficient, then we need to look at them and write better ones. And certainly we hope the big cities across America are going to write better laws for our police, for example. But we do spend a great deal of time with those and flying flags. Should make us proud to be Americans, all of us. And it should not be something that separates us, and that's why I do not support this policy. Our policies are backed by our assets. That's primarily our personnel, our police and also our technology. To assure equality, safety for our police officers, for our homes and business owners, for all of our citizens, regardless of where they came from. They include those that need to be defended because we are protecting them for their national origin, their culture, their sexual. Identity and gender, age, color, religion. I'm sorry if I forgot any one of those rights, but that's what it means to be an American. Our police have just distributed all of their training manuals and operational policies to the council. And we will be looking and working on that as they again are across America and probably having some workshops to make sure that our community understands. That this is not going to happen here and that we are very conscientious of what the public would like to see in those policies. In fact, our police chief recently sat in front of us and said, our job is not to put more police in the streets. Our job is to communicate with the individuals in our community. And make sure they feel safe in coming to us and that we support them in whatever concerns and needs that they have. And certainly I can't commend Chief Shields as you all council members would here. And all the people that work in the sworn officers and the VIP in our, in our department. And I encourage you all, by the way, to go to Facebook Live five, two, six, every Wednesday and see what we are doing because they'll talk to you in a very personal way. So how does this policy tonight make such a difference? To me, it makes an unforeseen difference when we start displaying one flag one week and a different one, even if it's six months later. Of something that's important to some of our citizens and not all, because it's providing something that is much more politicized than I've ever seen this council do. It's not that we can't recognize different communities in different ways. And I referred before that the, when a church came years ago, I took pictures a few weeks ago of the peace poll over by the Iron Horse Trail. Because it wasn't put at the town government offices, it was put somewhere else, but it certainly represents the community. So I'm not trying not to be representative, but there's lots of ways from proclamations, from signs, like we have park signs that tell our maps of our park. We also have things that recognize nine eleven, et cetera, and plaques. So there are other ways to recognize something at the library on a pole that is not a federal, a federal American flag pole. I've seen how divisiveness things can be because my own church, which is one of the largest, I guess, the largest Protestant organization. And a few several years ago, it happened with another one, has been divided over the issue internationally. We were told it would not happen a week after, after it happened. The entire church divided between America and the rest of the world. So I don't like to see us get involved in political things, even though everybody in that church had an opinion. None of the, none of the opinions were anti-LBGQ. They were simply opinions about what it would do on the church community as a whole. So I see this as a very divisive issue to start getting into flags as opposed to other things that we could display that would not be on our federal flag pole. We have promoted that, you know, the proclamation last week, but we also have promoted it for Red Cross, Rotary, Exchange, Discovery, Recycling. Fundraisers for Parkinson's, cancer, Tina Steam, car shows, choirs that uplift us, those things bring our community together. They're not political, they're all things that are what we would call nonprofit. Segregation is appropriate through certain laws, segregating needs is appropriate through our laws. That's why we pass the ordinances that say we will help the needs of the youth. And it will need more resources than maybe our seniors, although maybe right now, since we're all getting older, it's the reverse, but. But if you wish to display, you know, so there's lots of different ways to display proclamations. I told you that San Ramon was using a marquee and that Richmond had been using banners and the article I wrote in May. And that Richmond had been using banners and I, the article I wrote in Ma- May talked about West County and some of those, but I don't have examples of most of the cities and how they are doing it. So with respect to using the library, um, Newell, I'll call on you next. With respect to the library, the, um, that flag pole, which of course re- represents our first marriage on May. And is an American flag. Yes, this is, there is a portion of the flag of the U S C Code Title Four. That talks about commemorative flags. That's what Rob was referring to that allows you to put a flag underneath another flag. But that doesn't, in my mind, make it correct. Did you know that the federal flag in this flag code has thirty-one days that have special representation that our employees have to. Consider whether it's, not to mention all the times that they've flown at half staff, but there's that many. Holidays and things that have special times that they talk about the federal code thirty-one during the year. And so I think we're, um, getting into something that's a little bigger than we thought it might be for taking care of it to make sure it's done correctly. The, um, there's many issues that command our attention. I, again, I don't want to get involved in the political issues. But we've all, we're not that all different age that we've been there and we've carried signs and. Of course, this week we have a lot of rallies and, um, people that are supporting the Black Lives Matter. We certainly, after Dallas, were all carrying things that talked about Blue Lives Matter. We've had Vietnam, um, all the different wars that have. Of course, associated with what happened when they came home and how they were celebrated. And. This year, of course, we're suffragettes and we're supporting the right of American women to vote. Did you know in nineteen twenty, um, twenty? People that were Asian and citizens still couldn't vote. So there are lots of issues that require. Individual commitments from us and other people in the community to make that happen. But put, putting this, um, American flag, using our poll for this instead of a different kind of poll or something that is not related. Specifically to this is part of my issue. The other part is I do not want to segregate and separate rather than to unite a town. I can't tell you how exciting it is. Well, I can't. You've all been downtown this week. It's just like an explosive town with what's happening with our downtown businesses and it's been ignited. And it's being brought together by all these things. And I, I did hear last week, two weeks ago, that they're talking about asking us for a black flag. I'm a little concerned. Uh, Black Lives Matter because that's the, again, looking for one particular, and then you're telling me you're going to. Pick particularly flag that even points out those racist issues that is not part of what we considering tonight, which is. Sexual agen- um, sexual identity and gender. I'm sorry if I mixed those two words yet. I didn't realize that until today on the Supreme Court hearing. So I'm a member of the Hundred Club. I couldn't be, I think most of you all. Come to support our, our police officers. And, uh, this week, um, our officers have been wearing a little black, uh, band across their badge. To represent the officer who was killed in Santa Cruz, who was a father and, uh, his pregnant wife. It's very sad. And I don't want to divide our police from our community. We as, um, a council generally have not been taking positions on such diverse opinions. So I think in my oath, that's how I interpret it, and I believe that that particular poll is a federal flag poll. And that there would be another way to address this issue. So, um, thank you very much. Sorry, that's, but I didn't want to be anti-people. I want to be what I think. We as a government, our job is policies. Newell next, and then Robert.
Great.
Done. Thank you.
I, 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 I'm going to be a little shorter. Um, this is an important issue. And it's much simpler. It's not about politics. It's not about, I'll be honest, all the things. It has nothing to do with current events. Only people who want to think that way will try to make it that. This is, there are three very important things that we have to do. There are two flags that we fly that we need to codify with a flag policy. They were flown at Oak Hill and, and at the. Veterans Memorial Building. We have to have a flag policy to continue to do that. That's one. Secondly. This gets down to one simple thing, and I hope that we all believe in it. And I hope that we don't try to make up other stories. But free speech is the fundamental thing that has framed our country from day one. It was free speech that we fought against. All of that. We have picked one poll. Which balances the fact that we're codifying two other locations for a very specific use to allow that free speech to go on. That's the check and balances that we do. It's not a question of. Uh, whose it is or what it is. We have a policy that allows us as the council. This needs, I think, the four things that I asked the questions about. It needs that all, uh, requests, um, be made on an annual basis. That way, future councils, future people, future ideas. Duration shall be no less than a week, no greater than thirty days, depending upon the number of requests in any given month, which means no more than four. And that the graphic reproduction be submitted with a request. And that Oak Hill and Veterans Memorial Buildings are exclusive only to the P O W M I flags. Um, in addition to the, um. Um, flags of the services and the United States flag and or California flag. That's all it is. Just for speed. We have to provide one location. For that to happen. We have our own checks and balances, and we can argue everything that was just talked about. If you want to argue on that, but it is free speech. It's simple as that. It's nothing about. Any other story. Um, I support this with these four changes.
Robert Store.
Great, thank you. But you know, I, I'm really proud, proud that we took this on as an issue and, and, and look. We, we, we all thought it might be a difficult issue, like a lot of issues in, you know, in America. There's some issues that we're going to find both sides of the fence on this. You know, but we didn't kick this down the road and we took it on, and I'm really proud of the fact that we're, we're here tonight talking about it. Look, the rainbow flag has meant so much to the gay community for such a long time. And it represents so much more than I can sit here and describe. Either at a social level or a civil rights level. It just means a great deal. It symbolizes who we are as Americans. You know, the colors of the flag originally represented, um, you know, something that had to do with a gay person's life. You know, pink was for love. Red was for life. Orange was for healing. Yellow was for sun. Green was for nature and life. Turquoise was for magic. Blue was for peace and purple was for spirit. Today, when I look at the flag, it means so much more than that to me because those colors. Are, uh, are, are meaningful to all of us. Not the gay community, not the lesbian community, the L B G T Q community. It's for all of us. Love, life, healing, sun, nature, life, magic, peace, spirit. It, it makes us all feel inclusive and accepting of everyone. And probably today more than ever, this is probably when we need to show. How much we care about our community and make it, make us all inclusive. And I'm very supportive of this, and I, I honestly can't wait to raise. The rainbow flag on the town green because it represents all of, it represents more than just the L B G T Q mu- community. Represents all the things we believe in as Americans. So. You know, I'm also supportive of the, uh, language in here that would only fly the American flag, the California flag, P O W M I A. At the Veterans Hall and at Oak Hill Park, the very, very important language. Uh, the, the duration, which would be, uh, up to thirty days, but, but certainly it could be a minimum of one week. I'm supportive of that as well. And, uh, the annual request, you know, I'd like to understand that a little bit more, uh. Because there are moments that I, I don't know if we're going to get any requests for this, but. Uh, once a year, I'm perfectly good with. And, uh, if somebody on the council, I remember our check and balance is. Somebody has to come to us as a council member, and then we have to go to the council and, and pitch an idea. With specifics and graphics. And at that moment, we're, we're either moving forward to the dais as a council and, or we're just saying it's not, it's not going to fit. The community. So we do have a check and balance already in place. So I like the idea that we would be, we would, when we submit as a council member, it would be graphics and some specifics. And I am supportive of this flag policy. Actually, I'm supportive of both of them and be happy to make a motion.
Okay, is, um, any other comments from?
I would like to speak. Thank you. Um, awareness, inclusion, and compassion. These are the words that we have been, have received from members of our community about what the pride flag means to them. Um, I recently listened to one of the speakers at one of our peaceful protests downtown. And she, she was, uh, the age of our daughters and talked about the discrimination that she felt at Santa Monica High School. And it hurt to hear that because I probably was P T A president back then. My daughters went to school back then. And to know the kind of discrimination that she encountered in our town was hard, and I vowed that day that we can do better. And I've listened to many of the people who have sent us emails about what. The pride flag means to them, especially our youths, because our youths do have more discrimination. Um, from the. Being in schools. And this flag symbolizes to them inclusion. And I, again, with Robert, what he just said, in a time like this, we need, um, to have inclusion, we need to have, um. Less divisiveness. I like the idea that it's on our community flag pole and at the community square because people are using that area. I think that's important. But I look at this, I do not think it diminishes in any way from the United States of America flag. I think it only adds to the colors of the rainbow. And includes more people, and I think it's an important symbol for our youths, and I, I really do believe that. Um, I can get behind this flagpole policy. I like Newell's changes. I think those are good. They make them more specific. Um, and I support both the flagpole policy and the raising of the pride flag.
Renee Morgan?
My unmuted. Um. It's, it's difficult to make decisions sometimes when you're looking at an entire community because that's what we have to do is we have to make the decisions for an entire community. This has been presented to us now. This is a year going. Um, my, my, um, some of my questions in the beginning were, and I appreciate it, Newell, you putting them into the, um, you know, into the resolution here. Was, you know, coming back and requesting the flag again. I, I would say though, rather to, rather than to make it a little bit more convoluted, just to say that the only place. That a, a flag could be flown, um, a commemorative flag could, would be at the library. Um, that would exclude any other areas that if in future we decide to put a flag pole up. And or areas that are existing currently. So if we say only at. The library would be, um, commemorative flags. That might clear that language up a little bit. I do think that we need to have the annual request. I don't think it would be, um, correct for us just to assume that, um, every month. That we get a request and we fly that flag. That it be for that amount of time into perpetuity. I think they should have to also reapply. And I, I'd like to take it a step further on that and say, when we. Present it to the council, if I come and present something to the council that I have a diagram. Of that flag of which they're looking to get flown. Um, I think I'd like to make sure that it doesn't fall on the town to provide that flag, that it falls upon the applicant. To provide that flag. So we approve the flag that we choose. Um, out of the ones that they so-called submit. And then they are responsible to, to fund the price of that flag. I don't think it needs, the town needs to pay out of tax dollars for those flags. I think it needs to come from the organization themselves. Um, other than that, I, you know, i- it's difficult because to me as Americans, we all are under one flag. Um, we all are different. We all are unique and we all are under one flag. We recognize. Um, the different groups by proclamations and calling them out for what, whatever it may be for that month. But I, I believe that if we're going to do it someplace. And we're going to offer free speech, that it should be done at the library. And it offers the town green if we decided to do some type of event along with it. Um, we would have the town green also to utilize that, but no other areas. So those are my comments.
Okay, and you have my comments. Having just been through the split of my church and everything else, I. Not for separatism, and I am for government to be government for everybody in our town. So. Um, obviously we have different opinions on that, but, um, I do want to make sure that we get this, uh, motion correct. First of all, um. I'm, I'm going to ask Robert, who was the maker of the motion. I'm going to tell you what the items are, and Marie's going to give it to you in better language in a minute when she reads the motion. But, um, what I heard was that we would have only, um. I'm sorry. The three flags at the All Wars Memorial and the Veterans Building would only be the federal California and the M I A P O W flag. That we would make requests annually. That the duration would be at least one week and less than a month, depending upon the number of requests at that month. The specific flag graphics would be submitted with all requests. Um, I don't know if these are also acceptable by the other council members. One was to have the applicant supply. The chosen flag and, um, bear the cost. Can I have a? Show of hands on that? Are you supported by that or not?
I'm good with that.
That's fine.
And then that the only place, um, that it would be flown was at the library. So there were six different items that were added to that motion. Does that, I agree with where you are, Robert?
We, let me make the motion first and then we'll, we'll agree on all that right there. I, I'd like to approve Resolution Number forty-six. Twenty twenty, adopting an outdoor flag po- display policy. We probably should vote on that first and then come back with the Resolution Number forty-seven.
All right, I second that.
That is, that is what I was addressing, Robert. All those six items applied to that policy, then we'll take the second resolution.
Yeah, I think you made an error that's really important. Um, on, at Oak Hill Park and the Veterans Memorial Building. It is not all the flags that you said. It's and or inclusive all the service flags. What you just made was.
Say, say that again, Newell. How do you want it said?
Well, you just excluded all the service flags. By what you said.
On the main flagpole, you can only have three flags.
I'm just saying, I wouldn't overcomplicate that. The future, there was always talk about putting up the five service flags. Um, I wouldn't exclude those. By the, by the way you changed what I said, you're excluding those flags for a.
I, I think I'll let, I, I think I'll let Rob say it because the, um, flag code only allows, um, I mean, it requires the M I A P O W to be flown where the. Veterans Building is since two thousand nineteen. And probably the All Wars Memorial. So I, I'd like it to be clear what that is. It has nothing to do with the service flags. We're talking about the main flagpole. So I would. Probably defer to you, Rob, how to say that.
Uh, well, if. Yeah, if, um.
Clearing the motion the way it is originally. We don't need to make a change. Just codify.
The way I have it written down, Rob, is that the only flag to be flown at the Veterans Memorial Building is the American flag, the California flag, and the P O W flag. And N I A flag, which is one entire flag. To Newell's point, the service flights, there wouldn't be room on that flagpole for any of the service flags. So that would be Air Force, Marines, Navy, and go right down the list. Uh, so there's three flags that basically would fly at the Veterans Memorial and at Oak Hill Park. At the All Wars Memorial.
On the main flagpole.
But, but if we're making the flag policy. Wouldn't it, I, I just, I'm just suggesting, I wouldn't write it that way. Just say that the M I A flag, P O W flag shall be the only other flag flown. Those in the way it's written, it doesn't prevent in the future if they come back with service flags.
Yeah.
And we would have more polls. That is a goal of the veterans, to have all five service flags.
That would give them a little bit more flexibility in the future with this light pole ordinance.
And then we're done. We, we have it. It covers everything.
Do we have a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
The seconded by Lisa Blackwell.
You already have, you already have a second.
They already seconded it.
Oh, Renee, you seconded it?
They already.
Um, who did? Renee Morgan? Renee, did you second it?
Yeah.
Okay, I still couldn't hear. I heard, okay. So Marie, could you please cover the motion, read the final motion and take the vote call?
I will definitely take a stab at that and, uh, Rob, uh, Rob, feel, feel free to, um. You know, make any corrections as noted. Uh, the motion to adopt Resolution Number forty-six twenty twenty, adopting an outdoor flagpole. Display policy as revised was made by Councilmember Store. And it's to strengthen the wording for the display of the P O W M I A flag, the American flag and the California flag at the Vets Hall. And Oak Hill Park Memorial. Um, still unclear on the service flags, so Rob will have to add the language there. Require the requests on an annual basis. The timing for flying the flag of no less than one week and no more than one month. Depending upon the number of requests with no more than four commemorative flags flown per month. depending upon the number of requests, with no more than four commemorative flags flown per month. Require the specific flag and/or graphic representation be submitted with every request. Only place a commemorative flag, the, the only place a commemorative flag can be flown is at the library. And the applicant is to provide the flag and funding for that.
Okay, I think she got them all. Are you satisfied, Robert?
I agree.
And Lisa, and Renee, Renee's the second. Okay, would you take the roll call, Marie, please?
Just a second, there needs to be a clarification from Rob about service flags. Don't not include those.
Yeah, I, well, so let me raise a couple. So I'll have to think about how to word that. I mean, the, the original suggestion that Councilmember Arnrich made was, didn't talk about service flags. So, and since there isn't an existing pole there right now that would accommodate that, I think the best way would be to add a sentence that said in, you know, in the event that a future pole is added there, you know, that would be exclusively used for service flags. I'm not your house to address something that doesn't exist at the moment.
Right.
And I would just again, this issue about who pays for the flag, again, in theory, the request is coming from a council member, not from an organization. And, you know, it's supposed to be the town's speech, not the organization's speech. So, you know, there, in, in theory, you could have a situation where you have a council member who asks and gets something approved and it is not coming from another organization. So if, you know, that's, if that's the direction you want, that's fine.
That as well. I, first of all, I don't think we need to go, i- if I'm, if I'm being the maker of the, you know, second of the motion, I, I don't think that we should be going into the, quite into the weeds like we are right now with service flags and, and flag poles that don't exist and that type of thing. I think that those are things that we can take a look at down the road. I, I do believe though that the flag, how we can word that to make sure that people understand that to be able to have a flag, that there is a cost involved to do so, whether it be a, a fee along with it. I just don't think that it should be the town's responsibility to pay for their flags to be flown. I just don't think it should.
But, but I, but I don't see a majority saying that at this time. And I didn't put that in the six items that we just read with the idea that we have a master fee list. If we wish to have a charge for that, we can address that in the future. Is that okay for the council?
And, and that can be made in the ask as well. We come to the council and ask for a particular flag. For instance, if we say we want a Friendship City flag for Ireland, the Town of Danville would probably pay for that. If, if we're doing something for the American Lung Association, let's just say, let's just, as an example, you know, we could say, well, the American Lung Association is going to pay for their flag. So, you know, we're going to address that at some point when the ask is made.
Okay.
And also the, are we also doing, I didn't remember if we had on there, I'm sorry, Noel, did you start?
I want to go back to something.
No, 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 Renee has the floor.
Okay. What about the annual review? Are we making sure that a person, is that in there as well?
That was one of the items that Noel had, yes.
Actually, it was one of my items, but yeah, that was, it definitely needed an annual review.
I'm sorry, okay.
That's okay.
All right, Noel had it in his first four items, so. But you have it in the motion here. Marie, when you take the roll call, will you move the motion again? Noel, Noel?
Thank you. You're overcomplicating this, Karen.
No, I'm just trying to have Marie give the motion.
Just listen to me, it's my turn to speak, please. Item number two says the National League of POW MIA flag, families' flag shall be flown to following locations at all time and the United States flag is flown. Veterans Memorial Building and All Wars Memorial Building at Oak Hill Park, period. Leave the language that way. It, all it talks is about that flag. Doesn't mean we can't come back later. If you write it, if you have the motion where you put just the American flag and the California flag, period, you have forever eliminated everything else. Rob wrote it in a way that they can come back and make that request.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't do that, Noel. But Rob, what I would like you to do is make sure it's consistent with the law that passed in two thousand nineteen on how you describe where the MIA and POW flags are shown. And then you can go over it again at that point in time.
Right.
Marie, could you please read the motion and take the roll call?
Okay, the motion. To strengthen the wording for the display of the POW MIA flag, the American flag and the California flag at the Vets Hall and Oak Hill Park Memorial.
But I thought we were going to leave out California.
Let, let me try, let me, let me try and jump in here. I think, I think the motion is to approve the policy with the following changes. One, that a request has to be made annually. Number two is that, that for any flag that's approved, the period is no less than one week and no more than one month. That any request brought forward to the council must include some written materials backing it up, as well as graphics of what the flag would look like. And I think that's it. The language, the existing language regarding the, the flags at the two, at the Vets Hall and All Wars Memorial is already fine. And if we ever add something in the future, we'll come back and deal with that at the time.
All right, is that satisfactory to the council?
Yes.
Okay, Marie, would you proceed with the roll call, please?
Yes. This is the roll call for resolution number forty-six dash twenty-twenty. Councilmember Arnrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Store?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blackwell?
Yes.
Mayor Stepper?
No.
And the motion passes.
And I ask a request for the gist of my comment to be included in that. Explanation of no per Robert's rules of order.
And the motion passes four to one. And the next motion would be for adoption of resolution number forty-seven of twenty-twenty.
Right.
Approving the display of the rainbow flag during the month of June. And I'm unclear if this is revised to include June twenty-twenty or June in perpetuity.
I, what I heard was June twenty-twenty, based on council comments.
And, and the annual request.
Yes.
Got it. And. So you need to look for a motion. I'll make a motion for that. I'll second.
So moved by Renee Morgan and seconded by Lisa Blackwell. And if our city clerk will please take the roll.
This is for resolution forty-seven dash twenty-twenty. Councilmember Arnrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Store?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blackwell?
Yes.
Mayor Stepper?
No.
And the motion passes four to one. The next is a public hearing to consider adoption of resolution number forty-eight dash twenty-twenty, confirming the diagram and assessment and ordering the levy of the annual assessment for Danville Street Lighting Landscape Assessment District number nineteen eighty-three dash one. And Town Manager Joe Calabrego will present this item.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Marie, thank you, Mayor, members of the town council. This resolution is before you to confirm the diagram and assessment of ordering the levy of the annual assessment for our townwide street lighting and landscape assessment district number nineteen eighty-three dash one. As you are aware, we have had some version of a townwide lighting and landscape assessment district since the town incorporated back in nineteen eighty-two. The, the assessment that is collected provides for the maintenance of our town-owned streetlights, roadside landscape, and a portion of our parks and building landscaping. The assessment is, has been established and is governed by Proposition two eighteen that was approved by the voters back in nineteen ninety-six. And so the motion that is before you this evening would continue that assessment at its current rate. The last time that we visited this assessment, and this assessment was changed based upon a vote of our property owners through a balloting procedure was in two thousand and three. So it's been seventeen years. The assessment's been set at the same rate with, with no escalator. You have a copy of the, of the report and the assessment roll that's been provided to you. And on that basis, I'll conclude my staff report and we would be happy to take any questions.
Okay, so questions from the council? Is there any public comment, Marie?
Not on this item.
Okay.
Sounds like we need a rate increase at some point.
Is that a motion, Noel, or a question?
Yeah, I will make a motion too. I just want to make a compliment. I know we all share this. Just to thank our maintenance department for doing an extraordinary job of trying their best to keep the costs in line through competitive bidding, outsourcing, a whole long list of stuff. They do an extraordinary job and make Danville look good. And Councilmember Store is right. Seventeen years of a declining revenue net. We're going to have to go back out to the voters as we did before at some time in the future to make an adjustment. The town's subsidizing this and it's, it's going to affect other services. But with that, I would move the items presented here tonight.
Second that.
Okay, so it's.
And a third.
Yeah, I, I did see both of you at the same, same time. But I think I made the compliment recently at the community center meeting that we had on the budget. Two days after we talked about this and everything was released with respect to a great deal of things that people could do at parks, this town had, with so few employees, and this park at O'Say is just looking stunning. I can't tell you how many times I've seen those roses that are being cut by the neighbors and the clubs. And our staff is always there keeping load, it's just beautiful. So, thank you for all of us.
Agreed.
Who was the second?
Store or Morgan?
Oh, yes, that's right. It was Robert.
It was split. It was very far away, tie, yeah.
All right. Okay, Lisa, thank you.
Okay, I'll take a roll call vote for adoption of resolution number forty-eight dash twenty-twenty. Councilmember Arnrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Store?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blackwell?
Yes.
And Mayor Stepper?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously. And this takes us to the final public hearing item and there are.
Marie?
Yeah.
Marie, just a question. When are we going to revisit five point eight? Are we pulling that, I thought we were doing that after seven point one.
After eight.
No.
After eight point two?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And I'm going, Diane will be joining us, so I'm going to go ahead and ask her to start her. Takes us to the four resolutions. Resolution number thirty-five dash twenty-twenty approving the twenty-twenty-twenty-one operating budget and setting the twenty-twenty-twenty-one appropriation limit. Resolution number thirty-six dash twenty-twenty approving the twenty-twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-four-twenty-five capital improvement program and appropriating funds for the twenty-twenty-twenty-one capital project. Resolution number thirty-seven twenty-twenty SA approving the twenty-twenty-twenty-one operating budget for the successor agency to the former Community Development Agency of the Town of Danville. And resolution number thirty-eight twenty-twenty approving the master schedule for user and cost recovery fees. And Mayor Calabrego will be presenting this item. And Diane will be sharing her screen.
So you didn't want to see the one. All right. Well, thank you very much, Marie, Mayor, and members of the town council. I will try to summarize and present the high points of a process that, as council is aware, encompasses several months as, as the town works to put together the, the operating budget and the capital improvement program each year. Yes, and Diane is in fact helping me with this presentation just to underscore the fact that technologically I would have a hard time being able to walk and chew gum at the same time. So she's going to help me by, by advancing, by advancing through this. I want to, I do want to start by recognizing and thanking the team of people that worked on the budget this year. A number of our staff folks, our department heads, especially our finance manager and treasurer, Lani Ha, who really does the majority of, of the work pulling all of this together. And our city engineer, Stephen Jones, who did the same thing with the, with the capital improvement program. So. So Marie has highlighted the four actions that, that are before the council this evening in the form of four separate resos. There they are, I won't, I won't go through them a second time. As far as the process and the purpose of the budget and the capital improvement program, as I said, work on the budget and the CIP really begins back in February and involves pulling together all of the financial data, the forecasts, the, the expenditure recommendations that are made to, to me so that I can review them and work with our department heads to put the document together in a draft form that is suitable to bring forward to the council and more importantly, that meets all of our service delivery and financial goals in the year. So that process was completed. The budget and the CIP were posted on our town website on May twenty-first. And then the town council conducted several hours of public study sessions that occurred on the twenty-sixth of May and then also the second and the ninth of June to get us to this point this evening. The purpose of the budget and the capital improvement program, the budget is essentially the town's plan for service that is based on the highest priorities that have been identified in order to meet our unique community needs. Four hundred and eighty-two cities in California, every single one of them is different and unique in its own way. And the capital improvement plan portion, program portion of the budget identifies plans for and funds the one-time capital expenditures that we need to support our facilities, parks, and infrastructure. So we start with, with the town's approach, philosophy, if, if you will. The town's mission is to deliver superior municipal services that make people's lives better. And so the way that we do that is we look for ways to combine approaches to deliver service. We have a small in-house staff that, that we use to do that. We, we also utilize extensively contracts from other public agencies and private service providers so that we have the ability to add and subtract service, if you will, as fiscal needs might dictate. We believe in investing in partnerships and technology to leverage the resources that we have and to try to, to stay on the, on the leading edge technology-wise, if you will. We are a community, we are a town government that doesn't believe in, in borrowing and, and maintaining healthy reserves. And, and as a part of that, although I haven't referenced it on the slide, I should add and underscore that Danville is really unique from the standpoint that we do not have any unfunded pension liabilities or other post-employment benefit liabilities. So in terms of the current fiscal situation that cities find themselves in, we're much better off than, than most from that standpoint. And we like to estimate our revenues conservatively. We've always been careful of that. And I know that some of you recall a term that I used last year, which is that we, we like to use what I refer to as bifocal visioning that always keeps one eye on the present while we keep one eye on the future and keep a close eye on our ten-year forecasts as well. No discussion about any budget for any city or town can be, can be broached given where we are right now. now, without describing the if the effect that the current coronavirus pandemic is is having upon the global and the US economy. And of course, local governments are affected by that as well. Danville is is no different. The pandemic really is something that is unprecedented in in recent history. And from a fiscal standpoint, it poses an impact that is different from recessions past, if you will. In my forty-two-year career, I think I've been through four upturns and downturns. And the the fiscal characteristics of this, as well as the potential recovery pattern, is is going to be different than what we've seen in those past situations where we were faced with with recessions. Cities are facing a severe revenue shortfall as a result of the pandemic. The League of California Cities has anticipated or forecast that we will be looking at in the neighborhood of a seven billion dollar general fund revenue shortfall over the next two fiscal years, and that's for all of our cities in the state. As we look at this particular graphic and and bear in mind that what we're talking about now are changes that relate to our two thousand twenty and twenty-one budget. These don't take into account the adjustments that the town has made for the current fiscal year's budget, two thousand nineteen and twenty, where we have put steps in place that will reduce our expenditures by about two point two million dollars over where they were going to be at the beginning of the fiscal year to ensure that the impacts that we're seeing in the second quarter of the calendar year can be absorbed by the town within its nineteen twenty budget. So as we look at COVID nineteen and we look at how it's going to impact cities, we see that for cities and towns like Danville that fall into the population category twenty-five to to basically fifty thousand, ninety percent of all of those cities are are going to be affected and are going to be looking at service level impacts as a result of of these revenue losses. As far as our specific budget process is is concerned, this has had the impact of delaying our process. The the draft budget, the pre-COVID budget, if you will, was largely developed prior to the shelter in place going in order going in place in mid-March. And so we essentially had to go back to the drawing board and reboot. A lot of the traditional information and the consultants that we've used to develop our revenue forecasts have been pretty non-committal or pretty vague because they're still trying to assess the impact that they think that this will have on municipal revenues moving forward. And so our forecasts have been have been developed based on the best current information we had available, which is another one of the reasons that we've pushed this process out a little bit farther because we wanted to have the best data that we could. And we've done a, as council is aware, a very deep dive into revenues like sales tax for the town, recreation fees and charges, gas tax, and so on, and I'll cover those momentarily. It has also required us to look at a range of revenue scenarios for the upcoming year rather than developing the the single scenario that we would typically work off of. And then it has required the council and the staff to spend some time considering options for what we need to do in order to rebalance our budget with less revenue. In terms of the major revenues that are impacted by the the pandemic, there they are. And to quickly summarize, sales tax is our second largest general fund revenue source. And the the shutdown of of all local businesses and the shelter-in-place order have have had a significant impact on that and and will require a period of time to recover as a result. Our recreation fees and charges that are collected from our users and participation participants for all of our various programs, classes, and activities, as the council is aware, since we shut down in in mid-March, we are now getting geared back up again to offer some limited programming in the summer, and we expect that to tick back up again, fall, winter, and spring. But we're anticipating a fairly significant reduction in in those revenues for the upcoming year. Highway users count tax account, or otherwise known as the gas tax, again, less less fuel consumption, lower fuel prices equals less revenue. We're anticipating a fairly significant reduction there. Measure J, return to source, those are sales tax dollars that are collected through our countywide half-cent sales tax. Similar impact there to what we're seeing the sales tax. Building and planning reflects the fact that we're experiencing something of a slowdown as a result of the pandemic, but also looking forward at the impact that reduced interest rates might have and also the impact on banks lending practices as far as new construction loans. And then the TOT, simply the hotel tax. While we don't have an extensive network of hotels in town, we have our local Danville Best Western, and those impacts are being significantly impacted as well. So what does that translate into in terms of total revenues? Well, you see it right there on the screen. Our our two thousand and nineteen budget, we were looking at about thirty-six point six million dollars in total revenue. So pre-COVID, we were anticipating a modest plus or minus two percent increase that was forecasting revenues of about thirty-seven point one million dollars. As we did a deeper dive into our revenues, given all of the information that we have and looking at the the pandemic impact upon those, we developed three different revenue scenarios for the upcoming year that are, you know, I guess, bad, not so bad, and a little bit more optimistic, one, two, and three. You can see the the anticipated impact there, which runs anywhere from about a minus eight percent to a minus nineteen percent. And for purposes of fiscal planning moving forward, what we did is we rounded these to a minus three million, a minus five million, and a minus seven million dollar scenario after we looked at forty or so different revenue sources. So our modified budget approach then, after we did that, was to arrive at the decision to base our fiscal planning for the upcoming year on scenario two, which was a five million dollar revenue reduction. So our original thirty-seven million dollar forecast was reduced to thirty-two million dollars for the purposes of planning for the upcoming fiscal year. At the same time, we're acknowledging that the full impact of this is is still unknown. We expect that this is going to be ongoing and fluid throughout the twenty twenty-one fiscal year, where typically the council does a fairly comprehensive mid-year check-in in February. This year, as we begin to receive our various major revenue sources, I would anticipate that those check-ins are going to be much more frequent, that we're going to continue to be looking at our expenses and our transfers on an ongoing basis throughout the year so that we can continue to adjust should it be necessary to do that. And along those lines, the way that the budget has been prepared and presented, what we have done is we have identified reductions in expenses and fund transfers to balance the budget. What does that mean? Well, it means that unlike some cities, we've chosen not to utilize reserve funds in order to make a one-time adjustment and balance our budget while we continue to operate at a similar expenditure level. Reasoning instead that we want to be able to maintain our reserves as an added contingency or safeguard in the event that recovery should take longer or the revenue picture should be worse than what we have forecast. So here's what our revenue forecast looks like at a at a very high level. And you can see that we're comparing the current nineteen twenty fiscal year with next year. The nineteen twenty forecast, of course, is is pre-COVID, twenty twenty-one is post-COVID. And so what you can see there is that we're looking at about a twelve point four percent reduction in revenues, general fund, special revenue combined, year over year. The successor agency, I should note, is the successor agency to the former community development or our former redevelopment agency. And that exists really for the purpose of receiving pass-through revenues that is used to pay off debts that the former agency has. So that's essentially money in, money out, doesn't really factor in to the overall forecast much because those are protected revenues that are received from the state. So when we tack those on top of the total town revenues, we are looking at going from thirty-eight point nine million to thirty-four point four million, about an eleven point six percent increase overall inclusive of the successor agency. Take a quick look at what some of our major general fund revenues are and the impact of the pandemic and the forecast on those. Fortunately, at least as we look at twenty twenty-one, we don't anticipate that we're going to see an impact in our property tax, which is our single largest source of general purpose revenue. We look at sales tax. We can see that we're anticipating that that number will go from last year's budget of almost five point six million to about four point three million. This isn't something that we arrived at in in a haphazard form. What we did is did a pretty deep dive where we broke the upcoming fiscal year down into four separate quarters. We looked at every business sector and business within the town. And then we made some fairly specific assumptions in terms of revenue loss and recovery and how how long we thought that that was going to take. And we did the same thing with our recreation fees and charges where we broke the year down into four quarters and used historic data to look at which of the four quarters, how those four quarters generate revenue for us. So again, and unfortunately, summer quarter is our biggest quarter. And that's where we're going to see the the largest impact with the upcoming fiscal year. So what you see there, sales tax, recreation, fees and charges, big hits, franchise fees, pretty close to what we were looking at in the in the prior year, little bit of a dip there because we're anticipating that we may see some reduction in solid waste franchise fees because of reduced pickup with all of our commercial businesses. And then all other revenue sources aggregated make up the the balance of that number. So overall, on the general fund side, about an eleven and a half percent reduction. And we move to our restricted revenues or special revenues. And again, these six that are shown here make up the vast majority of those revenues. Our lighting and landscape assessment district is not impacted by this for reasons that that we spoke of previously. It's collected as part of the property tax bill. But again, those revenues are very, very flat because there's no escalator built in. Building and planning, we touched upon earlier. Here's where you can see the the fairly significant impact that reduced gas tax revenues, measure J, return to source revenues have. A couple of the revenues down at the bottom of the page, solid waste vehicle impact fee is is increasing because solid waste rates increased this year. And the all other revenues are increased by virtue of a hundred thousand dollar donation that we have received from our library supporters to help keep our library open, expanded hours. So overall, about a fourteen point seven percent reduction on the special revenues. So when we put all of that together in in summary form, there you see what our expenses and transfers are recommended to be with the with the upcoming year. When we look at operating expenditures on the town side, this past year, we our budget included just under thirty-three point six million dollars in in operating expenses. That number for next year has been reduced to just under thirty-one million. To put it into context, that's about the expenditure level we were at back in sixteen seventeen seventeen eighteen or thereabouts. The successor agency, again, no change there because those are passed through dollars. And those dollars come in in the form of real property tax trust fund revenues that are then used to pay off outstanding debt of the former agency. So in aggregate, total expenditures, town plus successor agency, about a seven and a half percent reduction. The the fund transfers for things like our lighting and landscape assessment district, the capital improvement program and asset replacement, those have been reduced by about forty-five percent. So in aggregate, between expenditures and fund transfers, going from just under thirty-nine point five million to about thirty-four point seven million. So in terms of actual expenditures and transfers, that's about four point seven three million dollars less year over year. And it coincides with the anticipated five million dollar reduction in in revenue. If we want to drill down and look at expenses by department very briefly, here it is. And what this highlights is essentially the fact that every single one of our six operating departments will be going into next fiscal year with a budget that has been reduced over the current year, disproportionately so in development services as we have chosen to freeze position vacancies in order to reduce our employee expenses. And we have a great deal, many more position vacancies in development services that accounts for that twenty-two point six percent reduction. But overall, as we look at it by department, there's a seven point eight percent reduction from the prior year. And when we look at it by expense category, as it's shown in the budget, it's presented a little bit differently, but the bottom line is that it is still a a seven point eight percent reduction. You can see there that when we look at employee expenses, we look at our temporary salaries. The savings there is attributable to the fact that we are carrying nine vacancies into the upcoming year, that there is no pay raise built in for any of our regular employees. Of course, the town does not do CPI adjustments, so there's no pay raise of any kind. And we've also eliminated all overtime expense for our regular, non-sworn employees. Finally, the reduction in temporary salaries reflects the fact that we're going to be operating with about thirty-three percent fewer temporary employees in the upcoming year than than we were in the current years as well. So some of the service level impacts that are associated with these expenditure reductions, I want to run through these just very quickly. In general, I talked about staffing a little bit. Our total staffing full-time equivalence is reduced from a hundred and sixty-one to a hundred and forty-one in the in the upcoming year's budget. So it's about a twelve point four percent reduction in staff in staffing. Our hours of operation, I've recommended that those be reduced from forty-two and a half to thirty-eight and a half. So right now at the town offices, we're open from seven thirty AM until five PM. We would continue to be open those hours from Monday through Thursday. Fridays, we would close at one o'clock rather than than at five. In our police department. In our police department, um we are reducing the number of uh of temporary part time staff that we have, which means that we're going to be reducing the number of people that we have to be able to staff our public counter. We're gonna reduce the number of people that we have uh available to perform parking enforcement. And we've also used some temporary staff to uh help uh do investigation and follow up on uh uh C cases, which are the um the the lower level uh uh cases that are handled by our police department. In development services, we are looking at a twenty two percent reduction there, as I said. So we're looking at increased uh response and turnaround times essentially for all of our permit applications department wide. Uh and uh as well as increased response time for our public works inspectors. Uh our public works inspection staff is being reduced from three full time people to one full time people, one full time person. Uh and we're also looking at uh increasing the amount of time that it is going to take to bring capital projects uh to fruition as as part of that. Uh moving right along at administrative services, um we have uh eliminated uh all uh vehicle uh replacement, uh all uh technology purchases uh and upgrades. And um we would expect that this would um would uh have some impact upon our service delivery townwide. In maintenance services, uh we're looking at increased response times for our CRM uh requests from the public. Um we are uh because of the elimination of overtime, uh we won't be doing street light inspections for our uh town owned streetlights. We'll be relying on the public uh to call us and let us know if we've got street lights burned out. There will be less uh staff available to uh uh complete uh park repairs, uh plant replacement and upkeep of our uh town buildings. And then finally, recreation arts and community services, um we've reduced funding and staffing for all of our programs, uh classes uh and and events. Um and the ability to uh restore all of that uh will depend upon how quickly uh we are able to um resume uh programming at close to a full uh normal uh level. Uh the council also reduced funding for library services and community events. Uh at least for the first half of our fiscal year, uh we have a uh donation that will allow us to continue to have the um library uh operational for up to fifty six hours of service. But um as I mentioned earlier this evening, we know that at least um on into the month of July, that's gonna include limited service, uh limited access to and use of the building. And the health order and the resulting uh conditions attached to it will determine uh how quickly that will be able to get back to anything resembling a full uh service. Uh just to touch very quickly on the ten year forecast, because I mentioned previously that we always want to keep an eye uh on the ten year forecast on the longer term view. There are um obviously, um there's a whole section in the budget that's devoted uh to the ten year forecast, looking out to two thousand twenty nine uh and uh thirty. Very high level summary for purposes of this presentation. On the revenue side, we're looking at just under seventeen million dollars less in revenue over the ten year forecast as a result of uh the pandemic. Expenditures, we're looking at um eleven point one million dollars less in um in expenditures. Uh this is uh the result of some ongoing um service level reductions in development services. That is resulting from the need to carry forward a number of the staffing vacancies uh that we that we uh will be carrying into two thousand and nineteen, two thousand nineteen uh and twenty. And the fact that we're skipping a pay raise in the first year of the uh of the of the uh forecast then uh carries over into the ten succeeding years. Uh with respect to transfers, uh forecasting that we'll be uh transferring about eleven point two million dollars less over the ten year forecast, uh or about one point one million dollars a year. Um looking at um recovery, uh sales tax, based on our ten year forecast, we are forecasting that our sales tax revenues will return to uh where they were last year, uh three to four years out. Gas tax, measure J returned to source numbers, uh forecasting about a two to three year recovery. Recreation fees uh and charges, as little as one, as many as two years recovered, required for recovery there. Uh and as was mentioned earlier, um when we talked about the lighting and landscape assessment district, we are looking at the need to go back to our property owners and ask for uh some type of increase in the LLAD, uh probably within uh the next two to three years, which would have been the case uh whether or not we were dealing with a uh a pandemic. Uh the another action before you this evening is to adopt our uh our master fee schedule for all of our uh fees and uh and charges. We do this uh each and every uh year. And in twenty twenty one, the recommendation to the council is essentially uh to uh incorporate a a CPI adjustment of of two point nine percent uh for the most part into the master uh fee uh schedule. Uh the appropriation limit is something that has to be set by resolution every year. Uh the appropriation limit is established, was established by the passage of Prop four and uh and Prop one eleven. And essentially what it does is it limits the amount of general fund revenue that uh can be appropriated and expended in any given year by uh any public agency. It applies to the proceeds of of taxes. For Danville, uh the twenty twenty one limit is forty three point seven million dollars. Uh our actual uh revenue that's subject to the limit is less than half of that. So uh as has been the case for many, many years, we uh we are uh well below the limit. So uh just to uh summarize, the um the twenty twenty one budget that is before you uh this evening um is um uh has been developed and presented, assuming that we would have about five million dollars less uh in revenue than what was originally forecast uh for the uh for the year. That um translates into about a four point seven two million dollar reduction uh from the nineteen twenty fiscal years fiscal year. Uh we expect to see some service level reductions uh as a result of this, which will be temporary, but for some period of time that is expected to go beyond the twenty twenty one fiscal year. From a reserve standpoint, our operating reserve uh is equivalent to thirty eight point three percent of the total operating budget or fifty four percent of the general fund budget. Town council's policy has been to establish a minimum twenty percent uh operating reserve. So the reserve uh remains untouched and the percentage goes up by virtue of the fact that our total costs uh are reduced. The town has no unfunded pension or other post employment benefit liabilities. We are recommending funding sixteen capital projects for a total of two point four five million dollars with uh no debt. And um given the uh adjustments that have been made, we are continuing to navigate on a course that is a fiscally sustainable one as we move to the future. So with that, um the staff's recommendation is to adopt four resolutions that are before you this evening. And I would be happy to respond to any questions that the council might have.
Okay, so let me uh turn it over to the council to see if they have any questions. Actually, I don't see the council.
Um you wanna stop sharing the screen?
Thank you very much. Sorry about that. Um that council has spent a great deal of time on the budget each year and your it's always open to the public. It's pretty much every Tuesday and in uh May, but this was rather challenging year for everybody on the staff. And so we so appreciate what they have done to bring this count, this budget into balance. And thank you, Joe, my our manager, who is just awesome at doing a ten year projection that always keeps us safe. So questions from the council? Yes, Noel?
I just, you know, as you said, Karen, we have spent um numerous days of going through this, questioning page by page, um making suggestions, trying to help direct policy to guide us. Um I would just amplify what you just said, Karen. It's extraordinary work that's been done. Since our budget was already ready to go, pandemic comes along and the world changed, it changed so dramatically, unlike we've ever seen anything in our lifetime. And I think um for those that look at the budget and the presentation that Joe did, which was outstanding, it really shows that these are deep cuts. These are deep cuts. Um services dropping in the Great Recession, we we tightened our belts. We asked the employees a lot to do and we raised service levels. This is different. We're asking all of that, but the the cuts are so much deeper. Uh there's two million dollars out of payroll. Um we're asking employees again, and this is a huge ask. And it's something that we all should be absolutely thankful every day. Um unlike other cities, we're asking our employees to have no cost of living, no raise of nothing um for this period of time. And and that is a big thank you, I know, from all of us. Um it's extraordinary times. Uh we have no precedent. We have no roadmap for this, except for our experience and under the great leadership of our staff, Joe Calabrego, Lonnie Ha in finance, to set um tough standards and help people have to react to it. You know, we're have effectively twenty less full time positions. We had nearly ten retirements. So while we're cutting two million dollars in payroll, we're still asking staff to cover all of those service elements with less people. Um and that's that's a big ask. But together we can do this and we are in this together. We and the on the outside and the public who don't work for government, who own companies and things, we're all doing the same thing. Um so the pain is equal amongst both the town uh as a government and in private sector. I'm proud that we have such great partnership with Aperin, um CEO of Danville Area Chamber of Commerce in trying to help save our businesses, give them as much support and leeway. Um and again, a repetitive repetitive phrase, we're in this together and together we'll get out of this. But we also should know that Danville does do things completely differently than other cities. We are the most cost effective city around and not by a hundred percent. It's by a hundred to two hundred and fifty percent less than our neighboring cities. We have no debt. They have hundreds, I mean collectively in the in the other four cities, five cities around us, there's two billion dollars of unfunded liabilities. Ours is zero. And that's an extraordinary thing that we've done and of course we've taken. And um you know, I'd be proud as all of us to approve this budget and four resolutions as presented tonight. And again, to thank everybody for doing a pivot of not only looking at five million dollars cuts for next year and and looking at the impact going forward, but in basically three and a half months, cut two point two million dollars out of our current budget. And we're all doing this without touching our reserve. That reserve is still there for emergencies of disasters and things of that nature. So with that, I'll be quiet.
Robert Stor.
Thank you. You know, this is one of the extraordinary years, you know, and we'll look back on this and uh in is an incredible year where we had to make a decision between cutting two million, five million or seven million dollars, almost three million dollars of that. And this is like when a family, you know, comes together and says, we have to tighten our our belt and we have to save money. You know, so I have to begin by thanking our town staff for coming to the table and understanding the severity of all this and how sensitive the world is. And by the way, this is still a very fluid conversation because to some to to a big degree, we're not even sure what the end of the year looks like. But our staff agreed to, you know, hold their wages. And as you know, when you cut employees, everybody else works a little bit harder. That's just that's just simple. And our staff has stepped up to the plate and they've agreed to do that. Uh I've watched Joe, you know, stay at the office late, just agonizing over this budget. Joe, and I appreciate your leadership on that. There were no easy decisions made this year, but under your leadership, we will we will we're going to get through it. Look, put things in perspective. The Fed chairman comes out and just mentions the word resurgence and mentions the word, you know, getting back to pre covid uh times. It may take two years. The stock market drops eighteen hundred points. That's how complicated the world is right now. So we'll be having an ongoing conversation on our budget. You know, albeit, I mean, it's it's pen to paper right now and I have it in a binder, but there's probably a great deal of conversation uh and once again, our maintenance staff, our downtown building department, engineering, you know, all the folks that work in the town of Danville, thank you for being part of the solution because that's how we're gonna get through this. And I really do appreciate not touching our reserves. And I've said it every year that I've said at the diet, we don't spend more than we make. Well, this year we're gonna make a little bit less and we're going to spend a little bit less. And I appreciate the direction we're going in. I don't think people in the town of Danville are going to notice a service reduction because that's who we are and we're going to maintain those services as best we can. Uh but we still have a five million dollar shortfall. And Joe Calabrego, thank you very much for your leadership, buddy.
Renee Morgan?
You could actually acknowledge that, Joe, and actually a smile maybe if you want.
Yeah, go ahead, Joe. I'll wait for your smile.
Well, we're not gonna get that.
That's a great one because
Well, it's as good as this.
Those hours are appreciated. Renee?
This has definitely been um a a challenge, to say the least. And to have a budget completely revised from the very beginning um is no small feat. And uh when when Joe says something to the effect of bifocal vision, I think that it's important to understand that that bifocal vision also includes saving for a rainy day. And the town of Danville has done that, and a lot of communities can't say that. I would never want to compare Danville to that, but I can tell you that right now, it makes me proud to be able to sit in this seat and say that we've been able to do that continuously to where when a situation like this comes up and arises, we're able to still step up and be able to provide services to our community and our residents. You know, the the goal always is to keep, you know, the the goal of keeping people and property safe and being the safest city um have always ranked really high and has always been a a high priority for all of us. Um that's something we're not scrimping on. We're not going to not prevent those services or to cut those services. We're still gonna be providing those services. You know, our mission, um you know, i- is is to provide and deliver superior municipal services. Yes, maybe the roses at Osage aren't at, you know, being trimmed at a regular basis because we were locked down. But I think people will understand that and will know that the services that they've been giving are getting from the town of Danville are above and beyond what they're used to getting in other municipalities as well. So we're still gonna be here. We're still doing what we're doing. And I think that not only the town council, the staff, but I think the entire town of Danville needs to be proud to know that this is what we're doing. Your leadership is watching out for all of you and watching out for this town. And I it it's a no, no small undertaking what we had to do and what our staff had to do. So thank you to staff and and to everybody. I appreciate it.
Okay, Elisa Blackwell?
Well, I will echo the thank yous. I especially like to uh thank Lonnie Ha because she in essence had to prepare four budgets for us. And I call them the good, the bad, and the ugly because um not only did she have a budget that was going along swimmingly and then everything went off the cliff and she had to prepare with Joe, of course, but three different scenarios and try and figure out, those are numbers on a page, but really there's reality behind each scenario. And looking into the deep dives of the retail and what that would take, I mean, that the minutia of detail that we went through in the last three weeks um is amazing. And and I also appreciate the fact that Joe keeps telling us, this is very fluid. So I think we all are going to realize that, as you said, the numbers in our beautiful binder may not look the same at all a year from now, just because of the situation we're in. So I just want to thank the town staff. I thank Joe and especially Lonnie, who put four budgets together. I think Joe and especially Lonnie, who put four budgets together for us this year. And um, we hope the one we came up with is close to reality. We, we really do have to remain fluid, I think is the key. So thank you.
Hopefully that's for all of the staff. I mean, everybody sitting in front of you, including our attorney, has to cut budget this year. And it's been done across the board by, by Rob Ewing, by Marie Sensary. Um, Joe's, of course, Diane Fine, sorry, Diane Friedman is amazing help to Joe. And uh, Joe, what a great presentation. It's like last year, you checked it really simple. You guys just spent 40 days and night. Developing it over and over again, and yet you're able to present it in a way that says. We've been hit a lot by the pandemic because we don't have the sales taxes that we expected to have. Our stores were closed, our businesses are hurting. And I'm expecting everyone who's listening here is going to go downtown. And before they eat, they're going to go down an hour early and shop in our retail stores because it's been really hard on people who have lost businesses. And I think that we're um, we're feeling that same pain as the city, as, as you heard that. Um, people didn't drive, the gas taxes are down. Uh, Noel's been serving on CCTA. You saw how the Measure J revenues are down, has to do with property taxes. It's, if you'd like a presentation, we can give it to your group. It's something that is unique um, in Danville. There was another city in the newspaper a couple of weeks ago. And all they could talk about was how could they make another loan? Cause they get a big loan every year because they can't make their budget ever, ever. Come close to balancing. And we have one of the lowest budgets and it always balances because that's the job of government. And that's what you expect of Danville. Just superior service, even not all the dollars, just superior service. That's a thank you to all of us. Uh, um, all the staff that have made this happen tonight. Any other comments? Okay, great job. Then we're coming uh, to the end of the agenda, Marie. We're gonna take all the motions and all the roll calls. We have four separate resolutions here to take. Maybe you can share who's making the motions.
I already made the motion. We just need.
Before we do that, we do have one public comment that was.
Oh, I apologize.
Excuse me.
Thank you, Marie.
Yeah, one email from Mary Rose.
Okay.
Please increase the budget for police protection, buy more cameras, hire more police and thank our police department for keeping us safe. The silent majority of Danville greatly appreciates our police department, fire department and town council and staff. Very difficult job constantly dealing with the public and varied public, public opinions. Blue lives matter, safety of our elderly and children, families matter too. Thank you for your continued public service. Truly appreciate your hard work. That's all through our public comment.
That's okay. I apologize for that. Thank you, Mary Rose, for your comments about our police department. Um, was that um, first, was that first resolution motion yours, Noel?
Yeah, it was for all, to move them all as presented tonight.
Well, we have roll call votes on all of them. So real.
We can do a roll call for all four unless somebody wants to split them for someone.
Okay, that wasn't how it was explained to me, but if we can, that's fine, Rob.
I'll second the first one or all four of them. I'm good with all four of them.
I'll take a roll call vote for the adoption of the four resolutions, 35 dash 2020. 36 dash 2020, 37 dash 2020 SA. And 38 dash 2020. Councilmember Arnrich.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan.
Yes.
Councilmember Store.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blackwell.
Yes.
Mayor Stepper.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for keeping us on track, Marie.
Okay, I am going to bring in one um.
We have another item, don't we?
Yes, we do. 5.8 is where we are now. And I'm bringing in David Crompton and Blair Berry. So we are at 5.8, consider adoption of resolution number 18 dash 2020. Designating the Fazio Fisher House as a Danville Heritage Resource. And approving a historic preservation package for the historic structure located at 342 Railroad Avenue. And we're joined by Principal Planner David Crompton and Blair Berry from Berry and Win Architects. And let's see.
Yeah, thank you, Marie. And good evening, Mayor Stepper and council members. As you just mentioned, this is a, this is again a request for approval of a historic preservation incentive package as well as. Designation of the historic Fazio Fisher House as a town of Danville Heritage Resource. Back uh, just over a year ago, back in March of 2019. The Planning Commission and then the Heritage Resources Commission approved a development plan for the site. And it required the preservation of the historic structure. And it allowed for the construction of about a 2,600 square foot new building to the rear. Um, it's a new uh, two story building that would be behind the historic structure. In addition, the Heritage Resource Commission approved a, a second resolution. Which did recommend that the town council prove the historic uh, incentive package as well as the historic uh, preservation. As for the preservation package, it's very similar to a number of other historic preservation. Incentive packages that you've approved over the years, going back probably 20 years or so. Um, really the significant provision is the waiver of all the town controlled fees. And really the, the biggest portion of that is the uh, offsite parking lieu fees. So the total fee waiver came out to about $158,000. Which is in line with our most recent historic preservation packages, actually a little bit less. Um, than the last three packages. Um, one point I wanted to make is that uh, this property is in our downtown business district number one. Which is our most restrictive uh, district as far as land uses with the ground floor. Um, in this district, ground floors are limited to just retail or restaurant uses. In the past, the town has uh, included as part of the incentive package, a waiver or relaxation of those. Land use restrictions for the entire project. And so that would allow for office or other uses on the ground floor. Uh, we did stop doing that. Um, so the last three incentive package that we approved did not include that waiver. Um, I think there was a feeling that we were getting too many office uses on the ground floor in the downtown area. And so we wanted to do more to preserve the, kind of the pedestrian character of the downtown that we're trying to promote. So for this uh, project, the recommendation would be that for the new building in the rear. Um, we would recommend that you waive the uh, land use restrictions. For the ground, ground floor. And that would be consistent with findings that are provided for in our DBD ordinance. That basically say that um, if you are. In a situation where you're down an alleyway or. Uh, courtyard, you're off the beaten track and don't get a lot of traffic, then you can make those findings and you can allow for a non-retail restaurant on the ground floor. We are recommending that the uh, land use restrictions for uh, just retail and. Restaurant be preserved for the front building, historic building. Uh, it fronts directly onto Railroad Avenue. It has retail restaurant uses on both sides of it. So we don't think that that finding for non-retail restaurant could be made. At least as easily for that location. And so with that, my brief presentation, I'm recommending, we are recommending that you approve resolution 18 dash 2020. And I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you have. Thanks.
All right, first question is from Noel Arnrich.
Uh, David, nice to see you, by the way. Um, thank you for being here. Uh, so it looked like Blair dropped off, went on, dropped off, and now he's gone. So this is on consent. So since we don't have a person who's making the request, was the issue that they want to try to get that ground floor changed?
Hello.
Yeah.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Blair. Hang on just a second.
Yeah, my, my understanding is that uh, the owner builder um. Uh, is going to occupy the rear building with an office use.
Right.
And they would also like the flexibility to expand to the front building and also have to have office.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, are there any other questions of David Compton or Blair Berry?
Yes, I'm here, Karen.
I haven't heard from Blair yet.
I don't think he's here. Is he, is he here, Marie?
Yes, and um, I attempted to um, make Blair a panelist on three occasions and somehow that knocks him out. So now he is by audio only joining us.
Do you have any comments, Blair, by audio?
Uh, yes, hi Karen, how are you?
Great, thank you.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can all hear you. Thank you for coming.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you all for uh, you know, having me during your meeting. I was uh, I feel as if I'm a member of the council now. And good evening to you. I was gonna say good afternoon, but it's evening. So good evening to you. Um, let me go through what our request is pretty quickly. You guys have all had a long evening. So um, the uh, long and, and short of this is I wish I had Todd Fitch, my owner here. But he is at his mother's uh, birthday party. And so there was no way he could miss that, as you well can imagine.
Um, Blair, can I just ask if you heard David's report to us?
Uh, no, I did not.
Because he did summarize what the requests are and what the, and he has no problems with what the resolution is. So. Go ahead and complete what parts you'd like us to know in addition to that.
Well, I just concerned that the incentive package, um, as it is stated, does not address the historic bungalow building out in front. Which is where we're asking the council to consider a more flexible usage in allowing for office use. Especially in these times and shuttered downtown. This allows for a greater pool of renters and a higher success rate for holding a lease. These bungalows work well for office and not so well for retail due to the building's physical dimensions. Small rooms and lack of display windows, which we all know is, is paramount in retail use. These are standalone small buildings that cannot be altered or enhance their performance. They are great in shape and size for their charm and character, but fail as a workable retail model. I know this because I owned one in 402 Hearts Avenue and for 30 years next to the Veterans Hall. We had the same format. A large building in the rear and a small building up front, a heritage bungalow that was not touched. But at that time, it was not restricted either for use and we used it as an office building. For us, it was a great success and that was for a long line. And even more so during the last recession, as you all know. By allowing office use, we were able to downsize and occupy the smaller front building. While renting out the larger rear building and for multiple tenants. And that saved us for many years. I urge you to look at this project as long-term success and viability and allow flexibility and allow office space. Retail is shrinking market, as we all know. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Blair. And I'm going to go back to Noel because he was making a comment on the office space when you came in.
Thank you. I really had a question back to David. David, what has historically been the use of the building?
It's been an interior design, it's a retail use uh, featuring interior design.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Are there other questions for Blair or for David Compton? From the council? Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. That we. Well, actually, we go to public comment.
Marie to take the motion unless there's questions. Robert, did you have a question?
Well, yes, I do. You just, you know, I think, you know, looking at this project and I'm looking at the picture of this building and it has basically a small porch. And it has um, a very small window on the front of this building. And I know the backside of this building is 2,600 square feet. And if I'm reading the staff report correctly. The back of the building, the town believes that the, the site would not be conducive to a retail or restaurant use. So we have basically offices going, going in those spaces. You know, we have a building on Railroad Avenue that, you know. The Culverson design is in that building right now, which is, I don't think that's a retail right now. And I just think that, you know, maybe we should look at this as in a little bit of a flexible way because. You know, somebody's going to put a great deal of money in building 2,600 square feet on the back of this building. And I know we've done business this way all the time, but I think in the world that we're in. We should look on these that are case by case basis. And maybe allow a little bit of flexibility in the front of that building because it's a tough unit. To, to rent and it, you know, I'm not even sure if you could build a restaurant in there. Um. So I think I'd be okay with um, looking at the request for adding some additional office space in there. Because it's in between two commercial buildings as it is right now that have a great deal of restaurants and, and some retail.
Okay, I think someone else, did you have a question, Lisa? No? Okay, so what's the feeling of the remainder of the council and or is uh, or shall I turn it to Marie for a, a motion?
Renee.
Noel. I'm happy to make the motion.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you had another question, Noel. Sorry. Okay.
No, no, I'm just saying Renee was trying to make a motion. You probably can't.
It's okay. So um, I, I would like to recommend that we adopt resolution number 18 dash 2020. Designating the Fazio Fisher House as a Danville Heritage Resource and approving a historic preservation incentive package for the historicers. Historic structure located 342 Railroad Avenue. Um, and also allowing the use to be continued. I don't know how you want to word that, but. Possibly to have the use to be able to be flexible um, for uh, retail and or office use.
I'll second that. I think that's a very fair way of doing this.
Um, does that language sound adequate, Robert? Um, David Crompton?
I just want to clarify that right now, the, under the current zoning, it would be retail restaurant only in that front building. So if you're, you're talking about flexibility between retail and office, then you're, you're basically granting what, what you're saying is you're granting. Um, a relaxation of the land use restrictions in the front building as well as the back building and allowing other uses such as office, personal service.
Right. Adding that in.
Is there a time limit on that, David, normally, if we make a change like that?
Now, if you improve, if you approve the incentive package, then it runs with the property. Um, you know, one alternative I will throw out is that under the town's DBD ordinance, we have. At a staff level, administrative level, we have the ability to approve land use permits. For specific uh, uses that want to go in, given the circumstances at, at that time. So that gives us a little bit more flexibility going forward to look at, you know, if we, if we don't have the office go in immediately. Um, and, and. For example, if um, we know that they have made efforts to market to retail restaurants and haven't been successful, then you know, maybe at that time we can. Say that yes, it's, it's not conducive to retail restaurants. They're not able to find a tenant and we're going to approve a land use permit. Make the finding that it's not conducive to retail restaurant.
I remember several times in the past where we've made changes in our zoning because of the market and the economy changing. So I was looking for some way that the language, um, I forget who made the motion right now, Renee or Robert, Renee. Um, that would allow it to um. Be now and should we make a change in the zoning in the future? Because this is a really volatile area. Because we have other pieces of land that are going to be sold and developed out there. Um, so I don't know if you can do that and what the language would be, Noel.
Yeah, I, I would just offer this, that if, if we approve the resolution, we're done, we're done. It's office space. We know that's going to happen. And, and just think about this, Albatross is on the corner, move to the right of that. We have a brand new retail uh, wine tasting, retail wine store. That was open three days, got closed by COVID. We have a um, retail use and it's defined by that because an interior designer sells furniture, things like that. Um, there's a tax base, it gets traffic in there. We then go next door to a jewelry store and so on. We're getting an incentive package and we're already making an exception to that. We're making an exception, which I think we all support, is in the back. They wouldn't get to build this building if it didn't have the historic. And now we're, we're running away. So I would suggest, I, I won't support this motion. I don't think anybody should because I think it's wrong. It's, it's, it's punishing those who we have gotten to go the other way. Um, if you want to do it where after three years that they don't have a tenant of that. Automatically get it, revert to it. We could do that. So we don't have to, you know, come back to this. And, and I think that's fair um, in three years, but we're going to hurt that retail stores. Because right now, if I, I, I go by there every single day, because I shop right across the street. Um, the design center has people going in and out of all day long. You put it in as a office building now? Because don't think that you're saying, oh, allow it, maybe it'll happen. No, it will happen. So why not give them to say that after three years. Um, you do not find the conforming one, we would, we would allow and it would be. um, you do not find the conforming one, we would, we would allow, and it would be a staff-level review instead of having to have land use permits and all that kind of stuff. And I think that that, that gives them incentive. Otherwise, I don't wanna give a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars a taxpayer money necessarily not to do what we really want them to do. Otherwise, fine, don't take. You wanna do that, then we're not gonna give you the hundred and fifty-eight thousand. It's one or the other.
Renee, would you like to respond that since you have the mission on the floor?
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree. I mean, I, I, I think after listening to what you had to say, Noel, I'm, you know, I'm looking at it though because of having been in that building. It is very small inside and it's, I mean, we, it, there are a lot of retail stores that are small like that, that are quaint and small and have um retail. Maybe um, maybe the, the key would be to have some type of retail there, and like you said, with a three-year incentive, um, of, of a three-year grace period in the sense that they can't get anybody in there. I mean, to amend the motion like that, I think it would be, um, I think you, you're right. I mean, we're giving incentives already, but let's, let's give them the opportunity because I, I, I'd like to make sure that it's successful, that doesn't sit empty as well.
Robert?
You know, over the course of all the years that I've been on the planning commission and now the council, we've always complained about the money that we give back in incentives, and we've always threatened to look at that because when you give back a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars in parking lieu fees, and you think that the, and the Mills Act only basically goes to the, the historic part of the, or the new part of the back building, uh, you know, there's, there's, it's complicated here. The D, the, the, the downtown business district number one is probably one of our most restrictive this, bit district. We don't have retail traffic on that street yet. We want it. We don't have it there yet. I've got Lunardi's across the street. We've got Albatross in the corner. I've got a jewelry store. There's nobody walking past this building. I mean, let's look at it realistically. I've already seen what plywood on the building looks like downtown. It's not a good look. And I'm being a little facetious, but we need to look at these things sort of on a case-by-case basis. And actually, you know, I mean, look, I, I get what Noel's saying, and I, and I, to some degree, I, I do agree with it. But the reality is that office is probably what was meant to go there because you're not gonna get a restaurant, and I don't think you're gonna get retail. So to put the applicant and the owner in a position where they have to look for retail that doesn't exist, there is no retail that's coming into downtown when this building gets built, as of right now. We are in the midst of a COVID-nineteen crisis. You know, office maybe will have a chance. Somebody scaling down from Bishop Brand, coming into Danville. It is probably the direction that we should be looking at right now. And I, I get we want retail, but we don't have it right now. It's not gonna happen. So, and a restaurant probably won't go in that space because there's not enough seating outdoor on this thing. So I think we should really look at this thing. It should be the other way around. Let's give them, you know, if it's gonna be office, you know, we can always look at the uses after three years. But I think, you know, you got them help a building owner and the, well, the building owner be successful in this, and that's how he's gonna do it. He's gonna rent it to an office space and be successful. Anything else is not gonna happen.
Keep the money, and we'll keep the money. So I would say if you wanna make a motion with no um incentive, because the incentives are to accomplish what built downtown. If we don't wanna do that, fine. But you're also gonna hurt that wine store next door.
Yeah, well, but you know.
Yeah, I don't see how we're gonna get to retail if we don't start demanding retail and give a, a some kind of a grace period here because of the economy that we're in in the next year.
Well, what if we make that grace period less than three years? What if we make it within this, you know, this year, as we said, is fluid, and maybe we look at an option of give it a try for one year and then revisit? Because we may have to be doing this with many other new buildings because we're going to have this come back at us. I don't know. Three years seems like a long time right now.
That probably makes a little bit more sense because we could actually give them a chance to get it approved and, and build it. You know, but you know, what the incentive is for is for the owner to maintain the facade of the front building. That's how our design, heritage design guidelines have evolved. The back of the building is gonna be, you're coordinated, but we've protected a small bungalow-style home that was built in nineteen forty-one. That's really what the incentive was all about. We're giving them money to protect a downtown building.
Can I, can I ask David to?
Yeah, David has a question too.
I, just a couple of comments for your consideration. So, you know, in, in our experience downtown, um, and, and we've had times in the past where we've relaxed the ground floor and seen offices go in. I mean, all that time, we've never, you know, if an office goes in, it doesn't go away. Um, it's gonna be there forever. And um, you know, we have seen some successful retail in these types of historic buildings and restaurants, Danville Hotel, um, um, sideboard. So, you know, it's not to say that those, those types of uses can't happen. Um, and again, my suggestion would be that we start out with retail restaurant, and then if we, over time, we find that they can't find a tenant, then we can look at staff level and approval and use permit. So instead of picking an arbitrary number of years, um, look at it in real time and determine whether or not that those findings can be made.
Yeah, I'd be okay with that.
Marie, is there a second to Renee's motion? Are we gonna just?
I second it.
Oh, you did, I'm sorry.
So, so would you like to take that motion off the table, Renee?
Yeah, I'd like to amend it accordingly. I think what David um has mentioned is, is probably a better way to look at it. Um, gives us a little bit more ability to control as well and to um make sure that we're getting the appropriate use in there um, if possibility arises. Because like you said, once an office goes in, it stays.
And what period, what period are you putting into that motion?
I don't think we had a period of time, David. You said it was as, it correct? David, what was your comment? It was as um staff review?
We have the authority and, under our ordinance to review land use permits and make a finding that it's not conducive to retail restaurant at any time. And so if, you know, if, if that is demonstrated through a lack of tenants, uh, we can make that finding.
So would you state that, Renee, and then I'll ask Robert if that's acceptable?
I think Rob Ewing wants to mention something.
Oh, sorry, Rob, thank you.
No, that's no problem. I would just like to clarify. I think what David is saying is approve the resolution as presented to you. Correct, David?
Yes.
Okay.
With, with the knowledge that down the road, we, at a staff level, can approve a land use permit to allow something else other than retail restaurant if, you know, it's proven out that it can't, uh, that a, a retail restaurant can't uh sign a lease there.
So we're looking for the motion that's already here and then a comment in the minutes that with your reference to staff down the road. Can make permits.
So, so I think that what we'll do is we'll, we'll re, um, we'll re-mention the motion as a doc Resolution number eighteen twenty-twenty, um, designating the Fazio Fisher House as a Danville Heritage Resource and approving a historic preservation incentive package for the historic structure located at three forty-two Railroad Avenue. Um, with the flexibility to let staff, um, at, at a staff level, um, to change that if, if necessary.
Robert?
I second that, yeah.
Okay, so we withdrew the original motion, Marie, and this is the current motion on the floor. Do you wanna call the roll, please?
Yes. For adoption of Resolution number eighteen dash twenty-twenty, Councilmember Arnrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Store?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blackwell?
Yes.
And Mayor Stepper?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, and we're on to town council reports.
All right, this is the brief part of our, of our meeting here this evening. Is there anybody who would like to make a quick comment with respect to what's going on in our town? Amazing change the last few weeks.
Well, you know, I'll, I'll begin by saying I can't believe that we went from buildings boarded up to people outdoors in seating with plants and umbrellas and music. I mean, it seemed like over the course of literally, you know, seventy-two hours, we were able to get something into place that actually gave people hope that they could actually go outdoors and have dinner. Now, what I would say, and I've been trying to pass this message out, please be respectful when you come downtown. Please wear a mask. You know, try your best to social distance. I know you have a pod that you feel very comfortable with, but when this thing goes to a resurgence, we really are gonna have to make some difficult decisions again. And sheltering in place wa- wasn't a lot of fun, so I don't wanna continue that. So we really want people to understand how important it is to go downtown. But as a council, as a town, as a staff, to get that many people downtown eating dinner, brilliant. It's fabulous. And I, and, and people couldn't be happier, and it gives people some, some joy in their life, which I think they need right now.
Okay, any other comments, Noel?
I echo all of that and, and to thank staff, um, Alan Shields. As well as, you know, we had protest. Um, one was over two thousand people. To thank those people that participated for their respect for other people, for different people's views, and for the respectful way they conducted themselves um, in um what for Danville was probably one of the largest events of that type of thing we've ever seen. And I appreciate what Mayor Kevin's Karen Stepper said at the beginning of the meeting and what um our town manager Joe Calabrego said um, about um all the events that are going on. We're in extraordinary times. Um, but together, we're going to get through this, and, and we can all see great things that are starting to happen again in downtown.
Okay, any other comments? I'll just make a brief one and then come back to you, Renee, I guess.
Okay, oh, no worries.
Okay, so I just, um, you know, I, it's just wanna especially thank Zay Perrin from the chamber and Jill Bergman from our um Economic Development Director for Danville because they last couple of weeks, the shoe leather they've used to go into every single store and find out how much space they need for seating and get permits out there. And I can't, um, it's been awesome and very difficult for our business owners with all the boarding up that happened, and they're not even all down. And so they're counting on you. Do you remember that sign out front in the banner that says, "We love Danville"? That means don't go to dinner at five, go at four and shop for an hour before you go eat at five. So make it possible for people to stay because the next two months are very telling, and they deserve it. We just talked about a, um, a historic structure and how difficult it is, but that's why you live in Danville. Because we keep our history and it's very important, that legacy. So thank you to the people who come downtown, which I'm sure is at least a hundred and ten percent of the people in Danville and all around us. So thank you for your support of Danville. Um, someone else had a comment? I think it was Renee. Oh, okay.
Go ahead, Renee. So, okay, thank you. So I, I just, you know, obviously echo what my council member says, and I, I'll make it brief because one of the things I think um Robert said that, you know, you, you don't wanna shelter in place, but I'll tell you something that it taught me is um, first of all, it, it, it taught me that I can only do so many hobbies at my house. I do so many, clean so many drawers out. But what it also taught me was the meaning of real happiness. And that means being able to go out and, and see people and, and sit down and actually have a conversation face-to-face, not in this venue. Um, at first, this was great because I thought my commute time's less. You know, I just come down, I get, I go to my office and I'm home. But, you know, it did, it taught me that I value what we have and where we live. And what I mean by that is, don't take your business anyplace else right now. Go downtown, make it, make our businesses successful again. Bring that back up to where it used to be, and if not more so, so that you realize, just like I did, that we live in a truly special place. And we've all come together as a pa- as a town and a community to get through this pandemic. We don't wanna go back through this again. So um to be respectful, not just, you know, you're not wearing a mask so that, not just so that you don't get it. You're wearing it so that you don't give it to the grandmother that's sitting there with her family. Um, or, you know, or, or, or the child that's sitting there with their family. You're, you're wearing it so that you're protecting others. It's not something that you should look at like it's a hindrance. It's more of a protection for others. So keep it up, and um, you know, I'm looking forward to schools getting back in session and, and things getting back a little bit more to normal. But thank you to everybody.
Lisa, you had the last comment.
I guess I'm gonna quickly finish it up, but um I couldn't be more proud of our town, the way everyone came together so quickly. We were above the curve when it came to opening up those restaurants and then closing the sidewalks. And I walked around last Thursday night when we had the drive-through graduation, and that was a joyous occasion. And I was very nervous about what that might mean to the town if we'd have too many people out. There were people honking and celebrating in a very respectful way. And I think that we should all be proud that that graduation came off without a hitch. Um, I think Janet Wilford said, "Most parents said they'd rather have it that way from now on." They liked it better, so. Um, but the town looks great. We have the hearts out right now. We have European-style dining. And everyone came together to make that happen, including, you know, all of us together with the help of the town and the chamber. It was, it's just a really good feeling to be downtown again. So, thank you all.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, thank you for joining us this evening. We are hereby adjourned, and the sad part, as Renee says, we're gonna turn you off, and we're all gonna disappear and not get to talk to each other. So enjoy.
Well, nice to see everybody.
Thank you.
Good, that's always.